All right, welcome to tonight's city council regular meeting for August 4, 2025. Where we have one study session topic tonight, we have our budget advisory committee and Pete Eckle as well, the chair of the committee, as well as members of the committee to present their annual report. Welcome up. You guys can have seats up here at these tables if you'd like. We always look forward to hearing reports from our committees and certainly budget advisory is no exception. So thank you for coming tonight. All right. Chair Eckle, take it away or whoever you're gonna have lead it off.
Sure, so I'm gonna let Jay, who's our newly appointed vice chair, give the intro in.
All right. The past year has seen relatively few changes for the budget advisory committee. Former vice chair and chair Bill Lasege departed the committee at the end of 2024. He served on the committee more than two terms and his service as a volunteer member of the BAC and for the city of Inglewood will be missed. Alternate member Laura Cooper transitioned to regular member status. The committee also welcomed a new alternate member Andrew Fourlines in summer of 2025. Peter Eckle and James Haran served in the roles of chair and vice chair respectively for 2024, 2025. At the July 2025 BAC meeting, Peter Eckle was reelected to continue serving as chair with Jay Knight joining him as vice chair for 2025, 2026. For a fourth year in a row, the BAC engaged in the capital improvement project planning process, including committee recommendations for 2025, 2026 capital projects. While the timing of city council's consideration approval of capital improvement projects precedes the issuances of this report, the report will reference the committee's recommendations, including modification of the process for consideration and prioritization of projects in future years. For the second year, the BAC reviewed and audited expenditures presented by the public works department and Inglewood Police Department in association with the sales and use tax measures approved by voters in 2022. For the purposes of this report, the BAC is emphasizing the following priority areas: sales and use tax audit, reserve policy, and the capital improvement projects budget. The committee met with the following city departments: city manager, city attorney, human resources, city clerk, municipal courts, utilities, Inglewood police, information technology and communications, public works, parks, rec, sorry, parks and rec, library and golf, finance, and community development, including partnership with the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority. Let me move on to the sales and use tax audit.
Thank you, Jay. The sales and use tax audit focused on building off of last year's process and utilizing some concerns as related to the following things. The feedback received from the last year's sales and use tax process was used to design and formalize the voter-approved sales and use tax increase. The review process considered what additional data could be incorporated into the review process highlighting expectations regarding information that the committee asked for from police and public works departments to include each year to satisfy the voter-approved tax increase. A few changes made included improving labeling of data and providing a framework that both the police and public works departments could depend on to annually report sales and use tax funding used for alternative policing and road maintenance. In completing our review, it is the committee's opinion that taxpayers' sales and use tax funds were used appropriately for related alternative policing and road maintenance as was intended. Moving on to reserve policy. To provide a little background, we wanted to just note where we were last year. In August of, and the prior year when the reserve policy was originally amended in August of '22. The city council adopted an amended reserve policy, reserve policy and investment policy incorporating an unrestricted reserve of 12% to 21.4%, currently sitting at the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, recommendation of three months of operating expenditures, which is equivalent to about 16.7%. The new reserve policy gives council the flexibility to adapt to the city's needs with a reserve lower limit of 12% and a high limit of 21.4%. In order to change this, the city council must reamend the city's reserve policy and investment policy. Prior to these changes, the city's reserve policy and investment policy set an unrestricted reserve at the GFOA recommendation of 16.7% of either operating revenue or expenditures with no official mechanism to grow or shrink that reserve. The 16.7% of revenue reserve is approximately two months of the city's operations and was influenced by the GFOA recommendation, which was that general purpose governments maintain aggregate unrestricted fund balances in their general fund of no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues or expenditures mentioned. The purpose of this reserve is to fund government operations in later times and to ensure that the city is able to continue operating at normal levels throughout financial downturns. The reserve ensures that essential services are maintained during these times. The reserve can be used to smooth out the impact of fluctuating revenues, of which the city is currently experiencing. In 2024, revenues declined while expenditures increased in comparison to budget. This trend is continuing in 2025 and forecasted for 2026. This will call into question the purpose of reserve policy and its alignment as the financial situation is becoming increasingly important as the unassigned fund balance has been greatly reduced. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, cites the following reasons why governments should rethink strategies on reserves. There is an increasing uncertainty and volatility in the world, particularly as it is related to economic disruptions, severe weather, and other considerations. There is a growing lack of public trust in governments and experts. This can be manifested in opposition to governments holding large reserves rather than those resources being used for current expenses. Governments increasingly face serious resource constraints driven by rising employee benefit costs, legal restrictions on revenue increases, and stagnant revenue growth. These limits suggest that governments reconsider the use of all resources, including reserves, to meet these financial demands. Finally, advances in information technology allow governments to better analyze and devise optimal reserve strategies. Reserves are an important part and tool in managing these risks. It could be argued that the city should be utilizing reserves to fund expenses or even consider cutting taxes and not to hold a high savings reserve. However, the city must consider both public trust and what requirements may exist to maintain credit worthiness, among other considerations. Also, the city should reconsider self-insurance or other commercial insurance strategies to fend off potential threats in order to provide a buffer for reserve policy. The committee believes the city should decide on what constitutes a downturn. Necessitating the use of a reserve is a downturn internal, a lack of tax revenue is a downturn of general economic malay, consumer spending down, inflation up, interest rates up, which would be what we're going through now. At what stress level do we reduce the reserve to fund necessary operations? And Jay?
So my apologies, I did a little bit of a research project for this, but it did not make it into this report. So I am reading it off my phone, but this is just kind of an example to council about how we can actually use the reserve policy. So first things first would be for council to work on, like, how are we going to determine what a downturn is? Or are there different types of downturns of which the reserve policy will be used? Second is determining a yearly cap as to how much could be taken out of the reserve policy at any given time. Currently, we are at that 16.7%. So one of the examples I came up with with looking at reserve policies from across the country at different levels, county, city, cities of different sizes, kind of something I came up with was if we're at 16.7% and we draw down, considering our current challenges, it would make sense to cap it at two percentage points. Come down to that 14.7%. It would then be on council to decide, does it need to happen again? And if it does, then it at least stops at 12.7%, so you're above that 12% line. And you can kind of, you know, once we're at that point, decide, well, how dire is this? What harsh decisions do we need to make, hard decisions? But in order to, you know, if the downturn is for one year or two years and then we are back into positive revenue, it would be a repay of one-third of, one-third of that initial 2% over three years and then another one-third over three years for the second. So you'd have one-third for three years to cover that back and then you'd continue like that. Now, this is just a suggestion as a way to do it. I'd be happy to share my findings outside of this forum, just so I could actually have a bit better handle of what I wrote down. But finally, yeah, so the replenishment approach would be documented annually as part of the city's budget and adjusted if circumstances change. And then kind of some general recommendations to council that don't need to be repeated.
Sure, thanks, Jay. And with that, I think this discussion will be continuing into next year, well, into our new budget committee year. There are a lot of metrics that should be considered and several different ways that municipalities make determinations on how they will adjust reserve policy. So I think it's still largely an open discussion and something that city council and the city, I believe, will be addressing. And with that, the reserve could also be used to provide capital on integral projects if general revenue is not sufficient. However, capital planning, which the city does well, is already performed on its own merits and should be understood in advance. The reserve should also intend to cover economic risk, external losses, with the purpose of the reserve responding to significant unplanned unavoidable costs or revenue losses such as a recession. Operating expenditures ultimately should be cut back. Capital projects should be reconsidered with timing adjustments and reserves should be considered as a financial resource. With increased financial pressures, the reserve may need to backfill to maintain city operations. And finally, on reserve policy, the committee asked the city council to consider the adoption of a policy that would adjust unrestricted reserve by a set percentage based upon an established set of criteria. One possible mechanism favored by the committee is to consider revenue trajectories over the past three years, as Jay mentioned, with incremental updates that would trigger reserve changes. One might be to compare, or should be to compare reserve policy to other fiscally secure, in this case, local municipalities in Colorado, understanding our proximity to the city of Denver and the several impacts that we have from that. Also, you know, Denver may not be a great comparison, given some of the financial constraints that they are now facing. And finally, decide on a set of criteria that would shape an adjustment to the reserve policy through pure fiscal metrics that would be reviewed along with the standard fiscal calendar. The committee would like to continue to work with city council to provide recommendations that may enhance the city's reserve policy and investment policy over the next several months as the discussion continues and reserve policy metrics are decided upon. James?
Good evening, councilors. My name is James Haran and I just finished my tenure as vice chair of the budget advisory committee. As Jay said, the committee was pleased to, for a fourth year in a row, be engaged in the capital improvements review process and have a number of kind of highlights that we'd like to share with you, as well as some action points that we will be, along with the reserve policy, continuing into the coming year here. So first of all, there was broad consensus among committee members that the two elements that most influenced prioritization of the projects were repairs to existing infrastructure and whether and/or whether the projects proposed enhanced safety. Additional considerations that were taken into consideration in establishing rankings including included the urgency with which the project was classified, noting that urgency is often accompanied by an element of safety noted previously, and whether the project yields economic benefits and, to a lesser extent, expands accessibility. The committee did have questions about the inclusion of capital projects in the Parks, Recreation, Library, and Golf area in light of the initiative that was approved by Inglewood voters in November of '24. To that, to that end, we are recommending that departments should be required to align major capital projects with voter-approved bond funding or long-term capital plans. A number of committee members also noted that the workbook in its current iteration that's provided us as a tool lends itself to small value judgments. And the committee plans, as I alluded to, to undertake a more comprehensive review of this tool in the coming months and in advance of the next capital improvement prioritization process. Some of the things that we will be looking at in the tool and perhaps recommending as changes are a more clear indication of whether a proposed project has remained on the list of projects for multiple years. And if it has remained on there for multiple years, does it need to be either removed or does it need to be pulled down and looked at and updated before finding its way back onto that list? Also, we're interested in knowing whether the proposed project has already, or part of it, has already been in progress or has been completed, and the proposed project represents a subsequent phase needed to complete the overall project. We would also, I think, like to see a better indication of the cost of proposed projects within the context of overall funds available for CIPs in that particular year. And then we're gonna be considering an improved methodology for giving equitable consideration to less visible departments. So I mentioned that we felt that the list, as it's currently composed, tends to draw our attention and probably yours as well, to public safety projects. And that was one of our takeaways. And we wondered about what does that unfairly, or does that disadvantage departments such as IT, for instance, or the city attorney, or someone that may, a department that may not be as visible as, say, Parks, Recreation, Library, and Golf, or Public Works. We also will be looking at the methodology for reviewing the top priority project individually and by department. And so that was another thing that we felt like the tool in its current iteration didn't lend itself to us looking at every single department's top priorities, but we kind of went to the top priorities overall. And so we really want to be more conscientious of that as we go forward and as we hope to refine this tool that we've been using for the last now four years. So overall, the current process, while functional, we believe could be enhanced to support more transparent, timely, and equitable capital investment decisions. And I know that the committee and I look forward to coming forward with additional recommendations over the coming year.
The budget advisory committee acknowledges and appreciates the city staff for their time and effort to review the department plans for the year and the city council for its review and consideration of this report. The committee would like to recognize Tyson Thornburg, budget and financial analyst, who has been dedicated in both assisting the finance department and serving as the principal liaison to the BAC, including coordinating technical aspects of meetings and supporting member engagement. His professionalism and accessibility are sincerely appreciated. Finance Department Director Kevin Ingles, who has been very supportive and extremely responsive in assisting with the committee's financial and process questions. City Manager Sean Lewis and Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd for their commitment to engaging on an ongoing basis with the BAC and more broadly, supporting the city of Inglewood. Both have been key to answering member questions and facilitating requests for information and resources made by the committee. And to the many additional department directors and staff representatives that have continued to have themselves available throughout the past year to present departmental reviews and updates to the BAC.
And finally, the committee commands the city's administrative staff and city council for their ongoing diligence and prudence in managing the city budget with understandably limited resources. This includes having continued insight and involvement into the capital improvement project and planning process. And for the second year, the voter-mandated review of the expenditures associated with the sales and use tax measures for alternative policing and road maintenance. And the budget advisory committee also appreciates both the city manager's office and council for inviting us to come meet with you tonight. We welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Eckle, Member Knight, and Member Haran. I also see we have Member Fourlines in the audience as well. Appreciate, I know you're new to the, new to the committee, so you maybe didn't have a big part in forming this, but appreciate you coming out tonight. And now I'll open it up to city council for any questions that you all may have. Member Nunacamp?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It's always wonderful where you're here from the BAC. Again, you've given us a lot to consider, and I especially appreciate the spirit of continuous improvement on the CIP. We are all trying to think about how we can make better decisions and really value your input, especially on some of the process points. I think some of your feedback in the last year improved the process this year, and we are excited to see more feedback this year on how it can be what you named, which is a more transparent and equitable process, which I really appreciate. I want to talk about the reserves recommendations. I think it's really timely and interesting. As you may know, the idea of a ratcheting and sliding reserves came As you may know, the idea of ratcheting and sliding reserves came from the back once upon a time. And this is the first year, as you may be tracking, since we approved the policy in 2022, where we actually are considering it, given some of the revenue projections that we've been seeing. And I think we're asking the same questions that you've named is, you know, how do we want to make this decision and what are the considerations we want to take into the decision-making? And so I am curious, I appreciate your charge that we should consider these things and make these decisions, but did the committee actually discuss some of that criteria? I would love, you know, if we were to bump down two percentage points this year to 14.7, was there any discussion around how we would make that decision or the considerations that the committee would find useful in in that consideration?
At this juncture, we did not make any specific recommendations. I think we thought we were going to be farther along with this at this point in the year. However, there were a lot of other things that required our time and attention, and we knew that it was still an open discussion with council and the city and others. So we just wanted to provide some sort of at least intro and reminder of where we are and sort of some ideas or thought processes that may help us in sort of closing the gap between where we are and having a scale basis for making those financial decisions.
With with that 2% that I recommended, they came from a discussion where we, I think it was, sorry, we ballparked what we were expecting as far as a shortfall. And so with that 2% and looking at how that would work, you know, this is, this is the first time that we're considering this and have and having this, at least as far as long as I've been a BAC member. So with the consideration part, I think there needs to be two considerations for a downturn. I think there needs to be a regional. So if we're experiencing something, it's very likely Littleton and or other surrounding cities are going to be experiencing it too. But also, on a more state and even federal level, kind of understanding that things are moving and, you know, a recession could could trigger that as well. So I think there can be two different types of consideration for what the shortfall is, but I do think we want to have that cap at least of probably 2% so that we're not drawing down too far. And if you draw down to 2% or 2 percentage points, then you could draw down two more without going over that 12% mark. I mean, but that that has to be, you know, alarm bells going off, like, okay, we do need to make some changes, we need to cut costs. But it's it's both meant to put restriction on how much you can pull while also giving you the ability to do it over the course of two years as the economy course corrects.
Thank you very much.
Member Wright?
Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here and explaining your processes and your train of thought. And I do have questions, as always. As, I guess my first question will be, growing up and thinking about what we were told as just normal citizens over and over again, you need to save your rainy day fund, needs to be a minimum of three months. If something happens catastrophic, you need to be able to pull from that fund for three months minimum, if not more. And in our discussions and what you're explaining today, it's saying two months here. And then if we're changing and going down in percentage more from the reserve and something catastrophic happens, we're going to have less than two months to survive. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my first question is, as a citizen, we have been told there were commercials everywhere for as long as I can remember that we should have a minimum of three months. Why would a city not have a minimum of three months of reserves to survive? And that would include people's jobs. Where now we're talking of going down more and more and more, including up to 12%, where we're putting people's livelihoods at risk. I could, I could see of having plans where we're taking, asking people to take, you know, furlough days and that type of stuff. But I guess I need an explanation on that, that thought process.
Certainly, and I think that's important. There are opinions and guidance on both sides, and and there might be a period of time where reaching into your reserve during an economic downturn, for example, would be a way to preserve payroll, personnel expense, as an example. But there are also thoughts that, yes, you, we should have a very conservative policy, that money should be purely invested, and that rate of return also has some benefit to the city. So I think having developing some downturn or or operating revenue criteria that would help us decide when a policy change is needed or a policy, yeah, change is needed to lower the reserve may be necessary, and I think that's what we're coming to. It's also sort of said, if you have this reserve, and why don't you use it when you need it? So I think that those things will be have to be considered.
Okay.
And Jay has one more.
James, I just want to add briefly, too. I think it was in our last BAC meeting, one of our two council liaisons pointed out that historically, we've seen cycles of up to three years when things go up or down. And so I think that's another thing that needs to be front and center in in council's consideration of when and how deep to use those reserves. Because, you know, going into them robustly this year may leave you in a more difficult position next year if conditions are the same or even deteriorate. And if we're looking at a three-year cycle, you can see kind of the trajectory there. And so when I was listening to all of that information in our meeting, to me, it was a matter of kind of deferred pain and making a decision about how do you have your limited resources stretch out over a prolonged, potentially prolonged period of time.
Right. And and I could understand that, and I think that's where we need to be smart on how we're spending money to make sure we're not doing something that ultimately is going to cost somebody their their job. I guess that's where I'm thinking. And and the way that you did the CIP list, I think the tool is great. I think your suggestions are fantastic. And ultimately, we need to make decisions. Do we need to do this entire list? It's the the wants over the needs, and that's how we need to think, I guess. That's that's what I need to think of. I have one more question, please.
Member Wright? I just wanted to address the three months you brought up. The two months comes from the GFOA, and so we're just going off of that recommendation based off of their guidance. But in my research, where I was looking at different cities, one one city that I did research was Philadelphia, because they actually provided a report as to how they made these decisions. And they do not, like, limit themselves to listening to the GFOA. And so it is on on council to decide, you know, we have these guidelines, now let's make them work for our city.
I would agree with that. So, okay, thank you so much, and I appreciate the hard work again.
Member Russell? Thank you. And I would like to thank the Budget Advisory Committee for their hard work. I appreciate all the work. I think that every year, it advises each report to the next one. It's just amazing. See, one of the concerns that I have, and maybe this is something I could look into, because I was talking to somebody, I think it might be to the history, the city of Inglewood, back in the down of 2007 and 2008, because I actually heard from someone that we actually lay off people. And and so I think that might be a good place to start. The one thing that I do appreciate is, you know, the alarm bells. I think at the point in time, we have to even go down 2%. Alarm bells should be going off for city council, because what if the downturn doesn't just happen for two or three years and it goes out for a greater extended period of time? So I just thank you for putting this together and just the thought process of helping us out. Thank you all very much.
Member Pre?
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. I agree with Member Russell, the the level of the report this year, just in my second year of being presented with it, has definitely increased. I think it's really thoughtful. I really appreciate the proactive approach to really looking at the reserve policy and creating some definition around when triggers should occur. I I think that that should probably already be in place, so I look forward to you returning with recommendations around that. I'm also a little curious around, you know, whether some of your suggestions could be tied to perhaps recommendations on the cutting of expenditures. It's easy to assume where that money would come from, but from your committee's perspective, I'd be interested in hearing if there would be a way to tie that together. I also really like the conversation on the CIP tool. I do think that it could be enhanced. I know that when we review it, some of the concerns that you brought out definitely hit me every time I look at it. And one of the the areas, I guess, I would make comment on that I really liked in particular was the indication of the cost proposal projects within the context of the overall funds for the year. I think for me, as a council member, that would be really helpful information to look at how I would prioritize projects. And then lastly, this doesn't need to be answered right now, but city staff, perhaps at some point in conjunction with your conversations, I would love to know what level of reserves would be required for Inglewood to maintain creditworthiness. I would like to have that defined. And then also some insight as to whether we anticipate, maybe in the next three years, any large need for seeking additional credit. I mean, we've had some pretty big asks in recent years. I'm not aware of anything upcoming that would be substantial, but just having that defined for us, I think, would be really helpful for the long-term look. So thank you so much for all your work.
Go ahead, Member Wright.
I'm sorry, I have one more. One more question. You may or may not know this answer, please. But if we do take those reserves down to, you know, 12, 13, 14, and the downturn continues, has BAC discussed what services the city may have to give up?
I think I think the intention of the drawdown of that 2% cap is to at least make sure that we don't have to give up, but we could look into if if we go either beyond the canary or beyond the alarm bell, what I guess needs to happen first. But I don't know how we'd kind of go about discussing that.
Well, you know, I I think we've largely been involved in the capital improvement process. I think the committee could take on some additional work in the general operating budget, and that would be something that I think would need to be done in order to do something like that. But but generally speaking, we've had very, very little to no involvement in that.
Okay. It just, I asked that question, I mean, most of us in the room, I would hope, know what's going on in Denver right now. Their, you know, budget's in trouble, and they're doing some pretty major layoffs or looking at major layoffs. And it just concerns me that maybe if we had looked at worst-case scenario and just had a, I don't know, plan that, hey, you know, this is what we want to look at, and these are the services that we would not be able to do instead of laying off and stuff like that and kind of have a disaster plan in place, I guess.
Sure. And and also, you know, I did look at the pre-intro on the report that you all had today, and I did write down the some of the purpose of of the Budget Advisory Committee, which I think was around 2013, I believe. And and here, here were a few of them. Advises city on the development, implementation, and valuation of the annual city budget. How is, how are city tax dollars being spent? And how can we engage in decision-making process to promote open and transparency in budgeting? And I did note that, you know, we would like to be closer to that process if if that's something that we're asked to do. James, you want to say something?
I think that's a good idea, especially if that's why this committee was formed to begin with. We need to stay on track with that. Thank you.
I really liked what what you guys had to say about the reserve policy and, James, especially your kind of added comments on that. We've talked over, you know, since I've been on on council, the idea of ratcheting and sliding has been a topic of conversation, and we have, we did, we had, we had our reserves built up to like, I think, like 24% or something at some point, and we're able to bring that way down and use that to get a lot of good work done. But we never had anything quite as metric-driven as what you suggested, you know, such that if, you know, if tax revenues are projected to drop, then, you know, use up to 2% of reserve policy to pull down to 14.7. I think that makes a lot of sense and build it back up, you know, over three years as revenues increase. That, something like that, I think, makes makes a lot of sense to me. And and also, you know, I think we get, keeping in mind, what are the reserves there for? If they're not there for an economic downturn, then are we just keeping them there to to, you know, feel good about ourselves or something like that? So I think it makes sense when the economy retract, you know, keeping, keeping three or three months in, we're keeping three months in reserve, there's not really a situation where your your revenues totally dry up for three, exactly three months, and then get back on track. That's not a thing. And so using it, you know, using those reserves when you have that economic downturn and then building them back up. I would say the one thought I had to add on to that was build them back up, and then as long as you have positive years, continue, you know, to build them up by, you know, a percent or half a percent over years, so that if you get a really bad downturn or then you get, you know, get reach, you know, you reach 18%, then you can say, okay, that's plenty, you know, that's plenty for now. Let's make sure we're also investing citizens' money in in capital plans, because I could imagine a scenario where you'd have a three- or a five-year downturn and and could need those reserves after, after a really strong time as well. One of the things that really stuck out at me as well from your report was having a streamlined process for for smaller projects. I think you suggested less than, less than $250,000. I, I don't know what all, what the process, you know, all entails for the larger product, but I really like the idea of right sizing the amount of effort into a project. And it occurred to me that even thinking, you know, what, do we need a third process for projects that are less than $20,000 or something like that? Because I'd really like to make it really easy for the city to iterate on projects. If we have a, a small little, you know, temporary crosswalk to get out, that's only going to cost a few thousand dollars or something like that, to not have to go through a lengthy, even costly process with staff time and commissioner time and all of that, quickly turn around a project, say, did that work? Let's build on it, that kind of thing. I think it makes sense having a low-barrier process to that, so. And then the other one I really liked was figuring out a way to evaluate projects that have been on the list for years and really think through why those have been there. I know the Dartmouth Bridge project is an example of a project that was on there for many years, and ultimately, we did, it was, we never did it because the amount of funding just grew. So there are reasons sometimes that they stay on there and probably should, you don't want to take a failing bridge off the projects list just because you can't fund it for a couple of years. But there are, I think, examples of projects that remain on there for year after year and then don't actually, don't actually have interest from council or and then don't actually, um, don't actually have interest from council or, or from the committees to, to move forward, so. Any other comments from council? Questions? Well, again, thank you so much, um, Chair Ackel, Vice Chair Knight, and member Horan and, uh, member Four Lines as well for your work on this. And we look forward to hearing from you every year, look forward to hearing from you again next year. Appreciate it. And with that, we'll take a break. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. You have final comments?
One, one thing that I did point out, and sorry, going back, and I think it goes to some of the questions we've heard from member Wright, um, and member, is it Pran? Pran? About the, um, about the reserve policy. And it was something I brought up in our most recent back meeting. And that is that if we are in fact going into a downturn, which most economists say you don't know until a couple quarters in, right? Whether you're truly in a downturn. Um, you really have to consider other larger economic factors right now that will potentially have a trickle-down effect on Inglewood and municipalities that may not fit the model of what was experienced in previous downturns. And so for instance, I think we all know that most ARPA funds and, um, and, uh, Inflation Reduction Act funds have either been utilized or in some cases, there are even efforts, um, including recently, to do rescissions or clawbacks. Um, there is a story that just went out today about the HR1 passing the House and Senate, or the so-called Big Beautiful Bill, causing almost immediately a $900 million increased deficit in Colorado's budget. Clearly that's going to have impact on municipalities in Colorado. So that's something else I would encourage, um, councilors to think about as they consider tapping into those reserves and trying to, um, as member Russell said, look back at what are the learnings from, um, previous, uh, downturns, but how could this one potentially be different?
All right. Very good. Thank you to the Budget Advisory Committee. And we'll have a break for about 15 minutes and be back here to begin the regular meeting at seven. All right. Council members, uh, return to the dais, please. All right. I call to order the city council regular meeting for August 4th, 2025. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
City clerk, if you could, please take the roll.
Yes. Good evening. Mayor Potem Anderson.
Present.
Member Noonan Kim.
Present.
Member Pran.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Wright.
Present.
Mayor Sierra. The record show, or six, six present.
Thank you. And now we'll have consideration of the minutes from the city council meeting from July 21st, 2025. Are there any changes to the minutes? See, none. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? All right. Member Wright. And a second. Thank you. All in, uh, please vote.
All right. Let the record show, six eyes.
Thank you. All right. We have a recognition this evening. This is agenda item five or six. My apologies. So 2025 is the third year that the city has held a comprehensive internship program with 15 interns working in 12 different departments across the city. Interns have played critical roles in moving forward many key initiatives, such as creating a tool to improve organizational culture and participating in trainings hosted by human resources. Um, and we're going to recognize each intern tonight. I'm going to come forward. I'm going to come forward and we'll have a certificate for each of you and the city manager will read off the names. If you can come forward and after you've come forward, have a seat here in the first couple of rows. And then we'll have all of council come to forward at the end to get a picture with all of the interns as well. So thank you all for coming out tonight and for the hard work you've done for the city.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. We'll start with Aiden Pott. Aiden has been the public works intern. And he's created a prioritization and ranking matrix for the city's minor drainage improvement project list and recommended several sites for next steps. He's also assisted with inspections of all types, gaining a broad public works knowledge, prepared drawings and plans for alley improvements, and performed a check of as-built survey versus design plans on the SEFR project. Next, we have Allison Stockford, our intern in police. She has been developing a variety of marketing materials, organizational resources, and recognition documents for both internal and external use. Actively participated in numerous community events and observed a court sentencing, consistently representing Inglewood Police Department and the city of Inglewood with professionalism. Next, we have Amanda Spidel from Community Development. Amanda has, is a second year intern for Community Development. She's researched zoning best practices for nonconforming general, nonconforming commercial uses in residential districts, provided mapping and GIS services for community development staff and assisted staff with various portions of the South Broadway Revitalization Project. Next, we have Carly Spradlin from South Platte Renew. Carly has digitized historical paper records and photographs, performed records inventories and assisted in the updating of the SPR records retention schedule, assisted with migrating, migrating electronic records into Laserfish and performed data organization and validation in preparation to migrate data to a new asset management system. Carly was also key in making progress on the cleanup of the network drive. Next, we have Christopher Lee from the city manager's office. Christopher has contributed to arrangement initiatives, developing standard operating procedures for internal processes, researching Sister Cities programs and providing recommendations and supporting the data and analytics division within department-level data visualization. Chris also played a key role in emergency management efforts, including updating key contacts, refining the crisis communication plan, and planning a lunch and learn on the topic. Next, we have Colton Zadkovic. Colton has been in the city manager's office Sustainability Division, helping progress the city's first-ever climate resiliency framework to be completed this October, conducting internal and external stakeholder interviews that were at tabled events to solicit resident feedback, presented to the Sustainability Commission, and thoroughly researched resident-requested solutions to increase Inglewood resiliency. Next, we have Elizabeth Bennett from the city attorney's office. Elizabeth has completed numerous legal projects for multiple city departments, including an analysis of legal and tax implications regarding city-provided cell phones, creation of a retirement plan cheat sheet for HR, and analyzed various new state laws and provided implementation guidance for Inglewood PD, city council, and other departments. Next is Evelyn Lamorges from Finance. Evelyn has created detailed process documentation for a monthly sales tax bank reconciliation, performed detailed taxation research on the city's BNO tax on basic local exchange service and on municipal waste transfer surcharges, participated in the annual budget review committee meetings, and took responsibility for the Tax and Licensing Division budget in Tyler New World. She's also performed detailed research on past city audits to document the city's taxation of software. And last but not least is Grace Alice from the city clerk's office. Grace supported election operations and assisted with board and commissions, helped with the document management project, and volunteered at city events. Grace shadowed each area of the city clerk's office, contributing thoughtful insights along the way. In addition, Grace collaborated with fellow interns to lead a presentation showcasing their shared efforts and ideas. And there I am not to the next, to the last one. We've got a few more on the next page. Jorge Soto Barahona from Human Resources conducted a salary survey for the city attorney and city manager classifications, conducted a classification survey for the planner and fire inspection positions, created various presentations, including the policy manual update and tip presentations. Next, we have Malia Tui OT Mariner from South Platte Renew. Supported engineering capital projects through data analyst analysis, technical writing, and meeting facilitation. Completed a native landscaping implementation plan analyzing water usage data, native plant research, field investigation, subject matter expert interviews, and utilizing Art GIS mapping to create recommendations to increase sustainability and optimize facility maintenance. She also performed river sampling, supported a pump rebuild, shadowed operators, and helped with outreach and communications activities. Next is Nora Montrose, also from South Platte Renew. Nora researched and developed statewide recommendations for implementing native landscaping in South Platte Renew, including conceptual modeling and cost-benefit considerations. Nora also provided comprehensive data analysis for multiple pilot projects, including key insights to inform operational decisions and next-step planning. And we have Peyton Dion from Communications. Peyton has served as a communications liaison at neighborhood night events, conducted usability labs for the Play Inglewood microsite, which is, has included a final report with recommendation, recommended improvements. She's assisted in digital accessibility remediation initiatives and designed and organized several editions of the Internal Junction newsletter. Next is Reed Flammy from Information Technology. Reed has assisted staff with Microsoft Authenticator setup in conjunction with the new VPN distribution, improved workspace efficiency by organizing and decluttering the IT office, led the Windows 11 upgrade initiative, identifying 134 devices for upgrade and 90 for replacement, assisted with computer upgrades and deployments, creating step-by-step documentation for both computer and phone setup, supported police department infrastructure by assisting with server configuration, firmware updates, and switch installations. And now finally, last but not least, we have Rob, Robin Darnell from Parks Rec Library and Golf. Robin has created a new inventory order guide for concessions and the treasure chest at Pirates Co., which has streamlined the process for staff. She's created an SOP for the Fourth of July special event, completed a quality control analysis of the recreation activity guide to ensure readers receive consistent and accurate information about the offered recreation programs. And that is our intern list.
All right, moving on to agenda item eight, recognition of public comment. Public comment. This is an opportunity to address city council. There's an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be a dialogue. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. And on the sheet when you signed up, there's a place to provide some information. Inglewood residents must provide your address or cross streets. Non-Inglewood residents must provide the name of your city. If you have addressed city council in the last 90 days, you will be moved to the bottom of the list. Written materials may be submitted to the city clerk's office in advance or at the meeting. Audio, visual materials must be submitted to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on Thursday prior to the meeting. Public comment will also be limited to 90 minutes total. And we will work our way through this list. And I'll call up the first name. Kyra Pekaitis. Hi. Yeah, you can come up and. Yeah, you can, he can stand up with you. Now you each get three minutes. I'll let you speak first and then I'll call your name afterwards. Yeah, please press the, there's a button there that'll, there's a button that'll make your light turn green. And it should be a little star maybe or something like that. There you go. Yep.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Can I, can I do the presentation myself too? Yeah.
Oh, you have a presentation. Okay. I'll let the city clerk get it sorted out here.
Nice. Yeah, perfect. Cool. Yeah, they're trying to, are we good?
All right. It's up on these screens up here. We see it also down here.
Okay, amazing. Hi, I'm Kira. This is Trevor. We lived in Inglewood for about almost four years. We wanted to come to you guys to talk through a piece of property that is on, I can't go next. There we go. A piece of property that we live next to on our street. Just I don't know if you guys are aware of this, this is a huge corner lot that is in this, in our like very residential neighborhood next to Swedish Hospital. It's been an empty lot for about four years. And it recently became a laydown lot for the city construction that's going on in front of Swedish Hospital. So there's like piping work that they're being done for like a multi-year project. And they're using that space as storage ground. Currently, there is the owner, he's like selling the property, so this like lot is up for sale. He's leasing it to the tenant, which I believe is the contractor through the city of Inglewood called TWX. And there are people that are doing the construction and they manage, manage the laydown lot, which we'll get into. And then ultimately, the construction work is the city of Inglewood because it is like the underground piping work for our entire neighborhood. So we wanted to come to you guys today to like, just reiterate that like there's, this property is like being very poorly managed. And like ultimately, the city of Inglewood is the reason why this lot exists currently in the state that it's in via this construction. So we wanted to see if there's anything that we can do to work together to try to make it better for the neighborhood. You guys can look through this at your own leisure. There's a lot of slides in here, but we'll, we'll skip over a few just for sake of time. I want to quickly touch on the fact that there's, this has been like four years of serious issues with this construction that our entire, there's some, some people here that represents on our street as well that we've been dealing with this lot for many years, even when it was a completely empty lot. And now that it's a laydown yard, there's been even more issues in the neighborhood. Like we've had property destruction, dumping of toxic and harmful materials. There's no ongoing maintenance of weeds or like snow plowing in the, in the winter. The gates will have to open at all hours. There's no emptying of like the construction dumpsters, dumpsters. The fence around the property has been the same fence for four years. You can see this fence here. It's been the same property. It's like pretty much falling over. It's really poorly maintained. You can see it in this other photo. There's like an extreme lack of organization. There's no flooring. There's no, they're just really not following a lot of the regulations that a laydown lot requires. And it's in the bright, smacked out in the middle of a really nice residential neighborhood where all the houses in our neighborhood have been like flipped over. It's a really nice like urban neighborhood with lots of great restaurants, Swedish hospitals right there. So yeah, overall, it's just not really a great site. These are a few other views of this lot. You can see like the fencing is not fully fenced even in. You can see this, like the construction materials butt up directly against like a residential fence too. Hence some of the destruction that we talked about earlier. So yeah, I'm going to pass it over to Trevor and he can talk to you about impacts.
All right, hang, hang on a sec. Trevor will restart the, thank you. Before we move on to Trevor, I want to let council have a moment to ask you questions, Ms. Pekaitis. Is any questions for our speaker? Ms. Wright, your member Wright.
Thank you. Thank you. My question is, has anybody contacted enforcement or the police and filed complaints on any of this?
Yes, multiple of our neighbors have fallen, has, I forget the abbreviations for all these different laws. Like it's OSHA-related, but also like EPA-related stuff. They've, we've, we have addressed a few comments and I don't think anything has been done yet. The owner of this lot frankly is like extremely difficult to work with. He did give me the contact info of this, the TWX company, but I still have not heard back from them. They're based in Oklahoma, so I don't really think they have a lot of like motivation to make the city care about the city of Inglewood, it seems like, or our neighborhood. So yeah, that's been. So we wanted to come to you guys because like ultimately, this is, the construction exists because of the, or sorry, this lot exists current, at the current state because of the construction that's happening via the city. So like we wanted to figure out how we can like potentially work together to make this a better situation without me having, us having to like try to get a bunch of other parties involved.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seen none. Thank you for your time tonight. Our next speaker is Trevor Jessup, who's also an Inglewood resident. And Mr. Jessup, if you would, you already got your light on. You're, you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Sounds good. Yeah, so the next things we wanted to go through were just the potential violations that could be occurring with this lot. Our, the, the research that we've done really has shown that, you know, this is potentially in violation of multiple OSHA violations. The main one that we found is the fact that we don't feel like that area is actually zoned to be a laydown yard. So I think I'll get to that one in the, in the next slide. But outside of that, from an organization standpoint, we feel like there could be violations around the, it being, you know, how clean it is, the actual materials that are being stored. We said, you know, the unreparable trash items that are just discarded around and left around the site. The walking path should be clearly defined and kept free of obstructions. There are like trees and weeds and bushes. Everything is just overgrown. And there needs to be like warning signs and barriers that actually identify, you know, what is on the lot, not just this unorganized mess of things laid out. Here's some additional, you know, potential violations. Again, you know, we've identified these. We don't want to say, you know, exactly that these are all being violated or broken. But we do feel like if we were to contact OSHA or these other, you know, regulatory bodies and have them come and inspect the site, that there would be multiple infractions that could result in fines and penalties. Going a little bit further into the unsafe conditions, just want to highlight the fact that there's a lot of children in, in this area. And as you can see in this picture, there's just things scattered around and it's, it's dangerous. There's also been an increase in crime that we've seen over the course of the last several months. This started in April. And we've seen from our neighbors that there's been stolen property. There's been, you know, boxes open. There's been an increased amount of homelessness and people, you know, kind of shady people walking around. So I know I've got 30 seconds left, but wanting to kind of highlight some of the short-term and long-term solutions. I think, I mean, I want to highlight the, the long-term solution of identifying whether or not this, this lot is actually zoned to be a laydown construction site. We feel that it's not, and so if it's not, then it should be relocated. And then in the meantime, as that may take some time to, to take care of, there are things like installing fencing, signage, borders, maintaining sidewalks, and keep.
Your times, thank you for your time, Mr. Jessup. Are there any questions from city council? Member Russell.
Actually, I would like for them to be able to finish their presentation. This, these are pretty serious allegations and this isn't just like a citizen. Certainly, they are citizens in Inglewood, but I would like them to finish talking about the two pages that they skimmed over.
Thank you, Rita.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hang on.
Yeah.
That, that would be a violation of our policy. So if we wanted to do that. City attorney, what would be required? Do we need to override the policy?
A city council can make, make exceptions, but it would require a majority vote of the city council.
Yeah, it would require a majority vote.
I would recommend that you make a motion, a second, and then take a vote on it.
I move to extend their time to finish the presentation.
I second.
Discussion. Member Ward.
I'd like some clarity from the attorney. Are we potentially opening ourselves up to legal liability by allowing one person extra time based on the content of their speech and not providing that same opportunity to other people?
Not this first time. But then if you don't give someone else additional time, then you could have potential liability, yes. So if, if it happens again and you choose not to allow it, there could be a potential claim based on content.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Noonan Camp.
I appreciate what's being brought to us. I appreciate the written materials and so I will be looking at that. I will be a no vote on this simply because of what the city attorney named. I wonder if Member. I wonder if Member Russell could consider framing her additional request for information as a question. And I know that I will also offer additional time directly as a follow-up. But given the spirit of equity that we want to have in this place, I'm not comfortable extending the time. But that does not mean that I'm minimizing the situation or that I don't want more information. But I'll do that outside of this chamber.
Other council members, Member Russell.
I actually appreciate the suggestion and would be willing to ask some questions in order for that to happen.
Okay, would you like to withdraw the motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Jessup?
Have, have you called code enforcement or reached out to the city with any of these concerns at all?
Oh, so we've, we've contacted the owner and we've, you know, had some, some back and forth there. Like my wife was saying, it, it hasn't really resulted in, in anything. I think this has kind of been our, I would say, first major step in bringing this to light. You know, we've talked through with our neighbors and I think they have, you know, made certain claims or contacted certain folks. But I would say this has been our first major step. The next step after that would be personally to probably contact OSHA, have them come out, inspect the site and look at other regulatory bodies, potentially contact, you know, lawyer and, and kind of see what option, other additional options we have.
Okay, so I appreciate that. And the short-term options that you laid out in here, would you really be happy with those short-term options?
In the short term, yes. But I think we both strongly believe that this is not zoned to be a laydown yard. And so I, I would strongly want that it, this construction laydown to be removed or relocated to a different site that is appropriate for what's going on there. We understand, you know, the construction project is happening right there. But just the fact that this is in a highly residential area and that, you know, hazardous, you know, all the things we pointed out, it just doesn't seem right that it's, it's in such a highly densely populated residential area to have some sort of construction laydown site like that.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Rita.
And seeing no other questions, thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Jessup.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, thank you, everyone.
Our next speaker tonight is another Inglewood resident, Mary Collechi. She's here to speak on the topic of Inglewood general information. All right, welcome, Ms. Collechi. You may begin your three minutes.
I live at the corner of Kenyon and Alapago. So it has come to my attention that.
Hang on just a second, I want to wait and get your timer started before you get your full three minutes.
I'm sorry, can't be in too close.
My apologies, I told you to go and then I realized the timer, no one was there to control the timer.
Can't be in too close, is that one?
Can we get her closer to the mic?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hang on.
Can I touch it? Ronnie will fix it. Oh.
Maybe if you bend it down, yeah, that's pretty close, I think.
Okay, and I'll just lean in.
On the side, we can move it.
Is that good?
Very good.
I'll just be clearer. I was a little raspy at first, so I'll use my outside voice. And I'm waiting for the.
Sorry, you may begin.
Okay, thank you for your time, council. Thanks for all you do and thanks for listening to us citizens. I would like to say I have heard some things when I'm out in the community and I've seen some things. I have to ride home and I have to take the bus through a highly dense area that has become more and more dense. And now they want to put in a bike path and, or that bike bridge over. And I'm worried that I can't get, I have to create new options through Medicaid to get to my work. I also want to say that I, listen, someone told me about the study session last week and how it was going to be triple hauler trash, not single hauler, well, tri-city hauler of trash. And I wanted to bring to your attention that I don't believe that, I believe that the Tri-County Health and the Tri-County Homeless Initiative were both oversteps on our part as a city. And those might not have worked out in our favor. And I also, it was brought to my attention from somebody in the community this last week that there was a mural on the Goodwill that is painted of Floyd. And she wanted of Jesus Christ, so she called them up and she found out that, she was told by the Goodwill, we, it was paid for by Inglewood City money. And I just wanted to kind of infer with you guys and see what you guys had to say about it and if you guys knew anything. I thank you for your time and I much appreciate all the hours you put in.
All right, thank you for your time, Ms. Collechi. Do we have any questions? Member Wright.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mary. My question is about the bike bridge. Is that the one that's going up on Oxford?
And Windermere, yeah.
Okay, so is it going to be difficult for you to use or is that a benefit for you?
It's, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna make everything a little, it's, I can't get, I don't cross that street. And so I'm worried about them even shutting it down to put up things and whether it's going to be wheelchair accessible for me to get around.
To be able to go.
Under the bridge.
Oxford to cross Santa Fe because you work on the east side, west side of Santa Fe.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
And Sheridan.
All right, that's something that we need to be mindful of when they're working on it.
Just questions for now, thank you. Member Wright, any other questions? Thank you, okay. Thank you for your time, Ms. Collechi. All right, our next speaker is Gary Kozak, Inglewood resident, here to speak on the topic of Oxford. Welcome, Mr. Kozak. If you'll turn on your microphone and we'll start the timer. Yep, there you go.
There you go. Gary Kozak, Inglewood, Oxford and Le Pan. What she just talked about with the Sam's Automotive, the reconstruction for the apartment houses, they blocked off a sidewalk. I've got eight to 10 blind people that use that. Now you have forced them, they totally blocked it, so you forced them to have to cross Oxford at Le Pan Street. Now I find out, and I'm speaking on record, that I'm representing the owners of 1280 West Oxford as well as 1300 West Oxford, that all of a sudden where the sidewalk that the development has set up will take 15 feet from the front of their property. I talked to the Inglewood engineer and he says, we have the rights to do that because that's an easement. You don't have the right to take nothing from nobody without their notification and clarification. And to do it properly by the way they align it, they being the construction company, will take out six of their trees and it won't align with mine, my sidewalk. So we have a little problem here. It's called, oh, we don't care about our renters because one of those are a renter, but I happen to know the renter very well, I coached him. And that house that we're talking about had the broken foundation and everybody said they went and checked with them, they did not. The owner has not been addressed by that. That was where my mother was born and raised. So it's all high and mighty, let's tell you, this is what we've done. The city engineer sat right there and said, well, I monitor Le Pan Street because it's not supposed to have heavy trucks. I got pictures of the cement trucks going up Le Pan Street, fully loaded. Well, I can't monitor it 24/7. Well, I'll tell you what, it happened all the time. This group that's here about this, I'm telling you right now, they're doing the same thing there. And everybody called and complained, but nothing gets done about it. And why is that? Because people up here really don't take consideration of anybody renting. I own my house. But a renter spends money right here as well. And there's garbage going up here on Broadway and let's narrow the lanes on Broadway. And let's move the bus track, bus stop, so it's stopped right in the middle of the lanes of traffic. You're going to get rid of all of our traffic in Inglewood, all of our business in Inglewood. Yeah, I sit on that board and I'm going to be a louder voice coming back to you guys on that board for some of the stupid things that are going on and I'm living it. I've lived there all my life. And it's crazy what you guys are allowing to happen within this city and you're not representing the public.
Your time's up, Mr. Mr. Kozak. Thank you, thank you for your time tonight. Any questions from city council? Member Russell.
Thank you. So did they notify the renters in that property next to the Sam's Project?
No, they've never notified the renters at all, to even the noise going on. And just the other day, they didn't even rent, ask them to move their cars. They started cutting the trees down that are over their cars. And they never talked to the renters.
Did they ever talk to the owners of the property either?
No, the renters on that house talked to the owner and they never contacted them. And the owner at 1280 West Oxford is watching on TV. And I'm representing them and they have never been notified about their idea of cutting the sidewalk and moving it back and have an acceleration lane. They've never been, and she's on TV listening to what we are saying. Because she could not be here in person.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kozak. I don't see any other questions. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
And before we move on to the next speaker, I just realized I forgot to warn council about who was going to respond to public comment tonight. And I'm actually not sure who's up next. My apologies, I'm mayor pro tem, backup mayor, so I'm, I'm learning as we go here. Does anyone know who's up next? Thank you, and you already knew that, so you're prepared. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, council. Our, our next speaker tonight is Regan Benson, who is hailing from a city outside of Inglewood. Ms. Benson, thank you for coming to speak tonight. You may begin and we'll start the timer.
He's not running the meeting right there, Tamra. You might want to let him know. No? You don't want to, you don't want any point order so you can actually run your meeting, right? No? Why not? Just too dumb? Yeah. So anyway, my rights were violated tonight when I came in here. Your new chief back there ordered his cops to do it, so they did it. You remember he allowed other people in here with signage? Oh, I wasn't allowed. Because my signage might be perceived as a weapon. Interesting, huh? Just like that, you know, that gold point on the flag up there? I mean, that could get stuck up somebody's, you know, that could be perceived as a weapon. So that thing perceived as a weapon is now left unattended to be snagged up by a madman. But that's okay. So anyway, you didn't call the speakers in order. Sarah was going to talk first because she is an Inglewood resident. So you blew it again. And the reason being is so she could have some comfort in knowing that I could come finish her speech for her. Because she's not sure she can emotionally get through it. And you keep disrespecting her over and over and over. Suck down that water, Joe, suck it down hard. I'm sick of it. Have you told the taxpayers here how much they're spending to file a counter lawsuit on me? You might want to get her to get her friends into executive session so you know how much money is being spent to file a counter lawsuit for protected speech. I have never in my life seen such a stupid city full of tyrants determined to punish vulnerable, innocent people. Did you know that your fire marshal put a sign on her grandpa's house that said condemned based on building code? Do you know that he never received any notification for the numerous liens that were filed on his home? Imagine all of that. Imagine the deception led by Sean Lewis and his team. Good job.
All right, thank you, Ms. Benson, your time is up. All right, that concludes public comment. Thank you all for coming out to speak tonight and we'll give Member Ward. I want, I want to, I want to just speak to, there's a couple of things that happened tonight that I want to speak to real quick. One of the rules that we have as a policy is that everyone is treated the same. One of our, we have a requirement that we limit the speeches to three minutes, which is, it's nothing personal, that we, we have to stick with that with everybody. And we're under the First Amendment, we're required to, to treat everyone the same regardless of the content of your speech. The other, the other requirement that we, the other requirement that we have is that, please, please stop speaking from the audience. The other, the other requirement that we have is that speakers, if you live outside of Inglewood, provide your city. If you live inside of Inglewood, you provide your address or cross streets. And that we have to apply that rule. Mr. Kozak, you are not, you are not authorized to speak. Please, please go sit down.
This gentleman signed ahead of me.
Please go sit down. Mr. Mr. Kozak, you are in, you are, you are interrupting this meeting.
Point of, point of order, point of order. So I would like to know, Mayor Pro Tem, were other people signed up on the list or did their names get erased from the list? Could we just address that?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, the, the policy that we have, I'll, I'll read the top of the list. Inglewood residents must include either your street address or cross streets. Non-Inglewood residents must provide the city you reside, reside in. Our policy has been, this is the way the mayor has done this, is that if you don't provide your street address or cross streets and you live in Inglewood, you don't get to speak. That's the way we treat everybody. And if you live outside of Inglewood and you don't provide your city, you're not allowed to speak.
So, so can I ask Mayor Pro Tem, the people that were, who removes them from the list? Is it the mayor's job to do that or does the city clerk take them off because they didn't provide?
Their, the name remained on the list, but I, I asked the city attorney what we do when we, when someone does not provide their address or cross streets. And since they hadn't provided the required information, our practice is that we don't, we don't have them speak.
Okay, I would like to suggest that you in the future would ask that question in public so the public knows that someone has not done that.
Oh, that's a.
Mayor, can we please maintain?
Sorry, Mike.
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson, can we please maintain order in the audience?
Yeah, please, we need to maintain order in the audience. Okay. I need to apologize here. I did not see, I did not see Kevin Wright's name on, my eyes jumped over it. So I did not intend to intend, intend to skip Kevin Wright. If we could have order in the audience, please. I need to apologize right now. I need to apologize, my eyes somehow skipped over your name, Mr. Wright. I would like to call a five-minute recess. would like to call a five-minute recess. I want to just clarify what just happened here, and I'll start by apologizing. The other thing that happened was my eyes missed Kevin Wright, who did provide all of the information, and so I thought the reaction from the audience was all because I skipped over a person who didn't provide all of the information, and so I was responding to something negatively that I should have, that was my error. So, with that, my apologies to the person who did not provide their address. That's, we don't, I don't announce your addresses publicly from the dais. We want to let everybody have a chance to provide their address or cross streets, but it's not something we, or not something that I will announce publicly, but it is required in order to provide public comment if you live in Inglewood. So with that, I want to invite Kevin Wright up to provide his public comment, as I should have a little while ago. My apologies, Kevin, and you may begin when you get the light on.
I'd like to take a minute just to say thank you, Joe. I accept your apology. And I too would like to apologize for being out of line back there. I was loud and disruptive, and I apologize to all of you. Start my time. My name is Kevin Wright. I'm a Colorado resident, live in CD6, I'm a vice president of CD6. The reason I'm here tonight, I'm here tonight with a few direct questions for City Manager Sean Lewis, that the public deserves answers to, and I expect these to be addressed and on the record, Sean. Mr. Lewis, why did the city choose to move forward with disturbing lead service lines without guaranteeing full replacement, both public and private side? Despite federal guidance, EPA warnings, and known risk of lead exposure to residents, were you aware this violated the spirit of CCR 5, CCR 1002, 11-5, specifically Rule You said Inglewood lacked funding to replace full water lines. Yet between 2021 and 2023, this city council gave around, gave away $6 million to the private, of our private equity bonds to the Colorado Housing and Finance Committee. And tonight, Littleton wants the other half. Why did you recommend or fail to object to giving away those funds, when they could have funded critical infrastructure repairs, affordable housing, or protected the public? What vetting process does the city use before selecting contractors for lead line replacements? Who is the current contractor performing this work? Are they certified in lead-safe protocols? And why has the city refused to disclose their name? Why has the city not issued a public health warning? Sean, is it true that under your administration, internal plumbing in dozens, if not hundreds, homes remain original lead, even after city work was done? Have you verified any post-construction water testing was done at those homes? Mr. Lewis, your position comes with immense responsibility, when the city knew or should have known that disturbing lead lines would, without full replacement, puts lives at risk, and still allowed it to happen. That is not oversight, Sean. That's dereliction of duty. We don't need a committee anymore. We don't need a...
Mr. Wright, your time is up. Mr. Wright? Mr. Wright? Please stop speaking. Thank you. Do we have any questions from City Council? Member Russell?
Thank you. Could we get a copy of the questions that were asked? Okay. Thank you.
Member Wright?
As always, did I know what you were going to say or take part in any preparation of your public comment?
I'm a plumber here in town, in the city, in the state, and when I became a plumber, Kim, I took an oath, and that oath was protect the citizens of this community's health from people cross-connecting, people disrupting...
Mr. Wright, I think you've answered, you've answered her question. Thank you.
Okay, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, thank you for your time, Mr. Wright. And Member Ward, when you're ready, you may provide the response.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Anderson. I have a handful of council requests in response to public comment tonight. The first, I'll start with, I believe the Jessups is that, I just would like to enter a council request to verify if there is actually a code or zoning issue with that lot, and also to verify whether or not we are actually using the same standard for city projects as we would for private projects, as far as enforcement of code and land use provisions are concerned. The second speaker, Ms. Colletti, my understanding of the Oxford Pedestrian Bridge is that it will meet all of the applicable ADA standards, meaning that it'll be fully accessible, and it's actually a project that's been designed to improve safety in the area, as many of the related improvements in that particular area are. Also, I heard your comments about single hauler. It wasn't going to be a three-city project. It was just brought up on that sheet as something that we could investigate in order to reduce the environmental impact of trash disposal. I think I was pretty clear in that particular meeting. It is a plank that I would like to see removed from that particular proposal. I don't know if I have the majority of the body with me on that, but I spent a nice chunk of my life investigating single hauler less than five years ago, and ultimately, the conclusion that we reached at that time was that there was not a hauler that could provide service to Inglewood at the same level that the private sector currently provides for less cost. So, I think, I don't think that market conditions have changed adequately to change that particular outcome, and I would foresee a loss of necessary service for some of our residents in the event that the city decided to go to a single hauler. Mr. Kozak, going back to the development in the area of Oxford, I do have one council request regarding that, and it's something that we've addressed in the past in a similar manner, but it's what are the notification procedures for projects that take place on or near residential property? I know this matter is a little more complicated, because we have a private contractor who is, as part of the project that they've been approved to do, making some public improvements. But I would also like to know if we can verify what the right-of-way issue there might be,
I did a request probably a month and a half ago about cost of murals. And so I would like to, um, ask about the cost of that mural as well. Thank you.
Member Wright?
Thank you. Excuse me. Um, I have a council request. I would like to know as the Oxford Bridge is being, um, built, what the plan's going to be if Oxford is closed at all for those that are disabled, that are needing to travel into Sheridan. And I'm, if I understood, um, Mary correctly, she travels into Sheridan and her concern is if Oxford is closed, she doesn't have an alternate route. And that's what her concern was. She has to take Oxford to get into Sheridan.
Thank you to the public for coming out to speak tonight. And that concludes our public comment time. Now moving on to consent agenda. We didn't have any polled tonight by council, but I do have two that staff requested we table. That is, uh, nine B, three and four. So I'll ask that we get a motion to approve nine B, one and two, and nine C, one. Okay. All right. All right, we have a motion, motion to approve the consent agenda, nine B, one and two, nine C, one. Can I get a motion? Uh, all right, I think we, all right.
Council member Dunne Camp?
Council member Dunne Camp, move that. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we got a second by member Wright?
It's not working.
Oh.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, we got it. Who was it?
There we go.
Okay. Got a second by member Wright? All right. Please vote.
Let the record show six eyes.
Thank you. All right. Um, we have two items on here. Did staff want to, we had, uh, and for the, the reason for this is CB 39 Excel has not provided all the information that we need in order to prove these easements. And then for CB 41, I believe someone from Sheridan got back with information that needs to be incorporated after we'd already got this on the agenda. So do we want these just tabled at the next regular meeting?
Uh, yes, that would be correct. Mayor Protem.
Okay.
Well, we are dealing with Excel on the easements. And so I, I don't know if they'll get back to us by the next meeting. So my preference would be a date uncertain. And then I anticipate we could definitely bring the Sheridan-
Okay.
-next meeting, but I'm not sure about it.
All right, why don't we just, can I get a motion to, um, table nine B, two, or nine B, three and four to a date uncertain? And we'll, staff will get them on. They'll move, okay, thank you, council member Russell. Can I get a second? All right, any discussion? Seen none, please vote.
Let the record show six eyes.
All right. No public hearing items tonight. Uh, before we move on to ordinances, resolutions and motions, does anybody on council need a break? I know we had one recently, but it was kind of a busy break. So does anyone need a break before we continue on? Yes?
Can, can I ask a question? Did we, we only tabled one to a date uncertain. Do we need to table-
I, I asked for motion tabled both of them.
To a date uncertain?
To a date uncertain. And they'll bring the one back at the next meeting, the other back when it's ready.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
All right, let's take a five-minute break.
All right, so call the meeting back to order now. Moving on to 11 ordinances, resolutions, and motions. Our first one, agenda item 11A1CB43, assignment of the City of Inglewood 2025 private activity bond allocation to South Metro Housing Options. We have tonight with us Community Development Director Brad Power. Brad?
Good evening. Mayor Pro Tem Anderson, Members of Council Brad Power, Director of Community Development. The City of Inglewood has been approached by the City of Littleton and the Littleton Housing Authority, which does business as South Metro Housing Options, to request the allocation of our private activity bond allocation of 2025 to a project that will provide 73 units of affordable housing in that community, Littleton, about three miles from the city center of Inglewood, for affordable housing for Inglewood, for that project in Littleton. I should say that private activity bonds, if you recall our discussion last year, are a state-enabled financing mechanism that is provided on a yearly basis based on population size of cities and counties around the state. It's an IRS federally derived fund that, or allocation that comes from the federal government to the state. The state reserves almost half of it for the activities of the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. The other half is distributed based on population. And for 2025, Inglewood's allocation is approximately $2.1 million. Before I talk a little bit more about the specific request, I did want to indicate that we did a similar thing that we did this year as to last year, which is earlier in the spring, we reached out to Innovative Housing Concepts, Inglewood's Housing Authority, and asked them to identify any type of eligible project that they may have coming on the books in 2025. So our first choice as a community would be able to allocate those dollars for expenditure for an eligible project in Inglewood. And they're our first line because a lot of these funds right now throughout the state are being devoted for affordable housing development. There are other eligible expenses and projects that we didn't identify for Inglewood. But we asked them to provide a response to us by the end of June of whether or not an eligible project was going to be emerging this year. And by the end of June, we checked in with them, and there was not an eligible project that they had ready to go relative to an affordable housing project that we could devote the funds here in Inglewood. And so right around that same time, the folks from Littleton reached out and asked whether or not Inglewood would be willing to devote the allocation for this year to the 73-unit project in Littleton, on Littleton Boulevard. And so that's the nature of the request this evening. I do want to indicate that Sarah Burr, who is the Real Estate Development Manager with South Metro Housing Options, is online, and she can answer any questions relative to the project itself or how the financing is being pulled together. Inglewood would not be alone in terms of providing this allocation. Obviously, Littleton is providing the entirety of their own allocation to the project, but Arapahoe County is making a substantial allocation from their private activity bond capacity. And the City of Centennial is also considering a similar request for a partial funding of their little over $6 million private activity bond allocation. I'll conclude by saying this exactly mirrors the process that we undertook last year as a community by providing the allocation to a project that took place in the Denver, far north portion of the Denver Tech Center. That was an allocation of the City County of Denver, which actually issued the bonds. That was a multi-city participation effort as well. This one is very similar. In fact, a couple of the parties are the same. Inglewood and Centennial, if they go through, would be the same contributors to this type of project this year. And so this project and this process would mirror exactly what happened last year with the allocation. Finally, I'll just say that one of the things I've shared with our other city partners and the other housing authorities that have been involved in these discussions is that there may be indeed a day in the near future where Inglewood would reach out and ask for some reciprocity for some of these other communities to provide Inglewood the ability to issue bonds and fund these types of affordable housing projects, possibly down the road in the future. So both myself and Sarah Burr are available for any questions you may have this evening.
Thank you, Director Power. I'll open it up for questions from City Council, Member Ward.
Director Power, you covered this briefly, but is a private activity bond cash in the bank for the City of Inglewood?
It is not. It's a theoretical number that cities have that they can bond against that would make a project feasible for a private investor to buy that bond and have some type of, well, they would get repaid from the revenue associated with a project. So I don't know that they necessarily lend themselves to larger infrastructure projects, but they are tailor-made for the types of financing, especially in the housing realm these days, where you're gathering financing from a variety of sources. And this is one of the sources that cities are using. And I think we pioneered something last year, which is cities pooling the resources to leverage the funding to be able to make some of these larger projects more feasible than they otherwise would be.
So in this case, Inglewood is not actually issuing the debt. Rather, we are giving what would be our authority to issue the debt to another municipality, which is then issuing the debt?
That is correct. The debt issuer here would be South Metro Housing Options, which is entitled under the state Private Activity Bond Regulations. They can be the issuer. Last year, when we provided the funding for the project in the Denver Tech Center, the City and County of Denver was the issuer of the bonds. We subsequently formed a formal commitment from Denver, Centennial, and I forget the other city that was involved in. We actually allocated Proposition 123 credits, where we got 11 credits from that project last year. I've already raised the issue with our attending partners on this one that we would do the same, and that would be the similar expectations for Inglewood to receive some amount of credits for this project as well, under Prop 123.
So on the financial breakdown, the starlight sources and uses, this is for anybody following along, page 122 of our packet. What line would the private activity bonds be? Is that the mortgage line, or is that one of the other credit lines as far as the funding?
I will defer to Sarah Burr with South Metro to answer that question because she's more familiar with the specifics of the financing.
Thank you, Brad. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Anderson, and thank you, Council. My name is Sarah Burr. I am the Real Estate Development Manager for South Metro Housing Options, the Littleton Housing Authority. And to answer your question, there is no line item for private activity bonds. The rule is that a project is eligible for 4% low-income housing tax credits and state allocation of housing tax credits that we are competing for. If we utilize private activity bond cap for about 50% of the overall cost. So as you can see in the sources and uses, there are $32 million in costs associated with the project, and therefore, we are required to have about $17 million in private activity bond cap. And when we issue that, then lenders are able to loan the funds to us. They find investors, and then they loan the funds to the project, and we are responsible for paying that back. I hope that answered your question.
Sort of. It sounds very technical. So essentially, of this 31-ish million-dollar breakdown, we anticipate that roughly 17 million of that will be PAB money, but it's not in a specific line?
Correct. And it is a vehicle. It isn't funds. So the investor then is the one who, so when we issue, then it's used to make a loan to the project. So I'm sorry, it's not clear because it's really, it's also a bond attorney question. But that is how it works, is that half of the cost or more. And we project, we have to project out more because if we don't issue enough bonds, then it can't happen. It's not eligible. So we project a little bit more, and that is the 17 million. So we need to have half of the overall costs be covered by private activity bond cap.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from Council? All right, I don't see any. Thank you, Director Power, and thank you, Ms. Burr, for the presentation, for answering our questions. Can I get a motion to approve 11A?
I pretend I have a question.
My apologies. Member Wright?
Director Powers, do you know what we did with the bond in 2009? Inglewood did?
I don't. I know in the council history, in the previous council action, we listed that the previous years, there was a stretch where a lot of it reverted back to the statewide balance, which was, which is what happens every year if no action is taken by September 1st. It reverts back to the state. They allocate it. There were two instances in the last nine or so years where we, City Council specifically allocated the capacity to the Colorado Housing Finance Authority. What happened prior to 2009, I could not answer this evening.
So in 2009, through Community Development, and actually our good friend Darren, there was an ordinance where a plan was set up where we helped people with this money to buy houses. And I started looking at it this weekend, and I started thinking, why couldn't we keep this money and set something up? And I'm not the total expert on this, but from what I was reading, from my understanding, if we take this PB money, we have three years of taking this money and set up the plan, and we could help people with homeownership. So instead of giving it to other cities, why don't we do that?
That is certainly an option for the future for the council in drafting affordable housing policies. That could be something that we could put in place. The big challenge with that is the leverage of it. If we did it every year, it's very difficult. You do have, somebody has to issue bonds for this. There has to be some type of revenue payback. And so the idea of a multi-year commitment, developing that type of fund is something we could certainly look at in the context of council establishing affordable housing policies to assist the broad spectrum of affordable needs in the community. We could certainly do that in the future.
Inglewood worked with CHAF in doing it. It's, if you're interested, I have the ordinance, actually. And I think that's something that we should look at doing. And if we have three years to do it, we have that first, you know, $2 million, and then the next couple of years. And the thing is, is if we do it with low to no interest, you know, with low to moderate income people, and they're paying it back, we keep generating and helping, and gee, we've got affordable housing right there, and it's generating ownership for people. And I think that's something that this council should look at.
Let's get that discussion put onto the affordable housing discussion when it comes back for the next round. We make a...
Well, my motion is to take this money, and I would like to put a motion that we keep this money and start this program opposed to giving it to Littleton.
Okay. Before we do that, I want to ask if we can get a motion to approve the motion that's on the agenda here. And if we don't have sufficient motion to do that, we can look at alternatives. Can, Member Russell?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
If we don't have that set in motion, we would not be able to get that done before we would have to turn this money back into the state. Is that correct?
That is indeed correct. The deadline is September 1st, so the unordnance being in place and the amount of research that would be needed. We would need to have some outside expertise advise us relative to a program such as that, and research other communities, and they're setting it up. But September 1st is the deadline from the state, so if the city hasn't acted by then, the 2025 allocation reverses back to the state. This is certainly on the table for our 2026 process and beyond.
I think something, you know, utilizing our private activity bond for some kind of an affordable housing initiative in Inglewood is something I would certainly support and would love to get that on the... I do think it would require more discussion than what we have in front of us tonight, but for next year, I would love to consider that. But thank you for that, Director Power. Okay. With that, can I get a motion to approve 11A1CB43?
Still moved.
Thank you, Member Ward. And can I get a, oh, hang on, we're gonna get, we're gonna get this moved on. Yeah. And since we're still figuring out this new voting system, you could announce that you make the motion before pushing the button. Then I think that will simplify. All right, so we have a motion by Member Ward and a second by someone else, but the system doesn't yet show us that, so that is okay. Any discussion? Member Nuneck?
I just, we'll be voting in support of this tonight, and want to say I really appreciate the regional approach that we're taking to this. I appreciate what we did before in the Tech Center. And I think as, you know, we're smaller municipalities, and we have seen that our individual efforts can only take us so far, wherever we can partner with our neighbors, knowing that building affordable housing next door helps us here, too. I really commend. So thank you, staff, for bringing it. I'm happy to support tonight.
Member Russell?
Thank you. And I just want to thank Member Wright for bringing that forward. And I actually do think it is something that we should put on the table for next year before we get to this point. And so I will be supporting this with the intent that we will put this on the agenda to talk about it.
And I had, we had this come up last year, and we wanted to figure out a way to use it for Inglewood, but we were too late in the process last year as well. I wanted to make sure this didn't go on consent this year so that we could have this discussion, because I totally agree. I would love it to be used for something in Inglewood as well. Though I do agree with Member Nuneck that affordable housing is a regional issue. So the fact that it's going to Littleton benefits our region, so I'm happy about this outcome, but ultimately would like it to be used in Inglewood. Any other comments? Member Wright?
I will approve this, but I have a difficult time. The research I have, we have till, we have until September 15th. And we just need to do some forms and let them know we're doing something. But I will approve this. It gives me, as Member Ward would say, heartburn because last year, we said we wanted to change, and here we are, and nothing has changed. We're giving money away to another community.
Thank you, Member Wright. Member Ward?
I don't agree with that analysis for a number of reasons. But I will say, I'll note in the packet, the endorsement letter from our own housing authority and the indication that this project, which is on Littleton Boulevard, maybe a mile or two outside of our city, is in the 30% to 70% AMI category, which is a very much-needed housing category right now. I think this is an effective use of Inglewood's money. And as much as I would like to see this PAB money used in Inglewood, this project is viable now. It's a use of money now, and the sooner that we get that money into the market, the sooner we can start relieving a little bit of the pressure of our housing in that particular AMI category in a neighborhood not too far from the city. So I like this use, and I'll be voting yes.
All right, see no more comments. Please vote.
I don't have a place to vote.
Let the record show success.
All right. Moving on to, and for the audience, I know you have passionate feelings about these things. Please ask you to not engage verbally as City Council is working through these issues. Moving on now to 11A2CB42. We have City Attorney Niles here to speak to amending the municipal code to ensure continued operations, response in disasters and emergencies. City Attorney Niles?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Anderson. As part of the city's strategic plan, you have a goal that directs city staff to prepare our community for large-scale emergencies. And so this is part of that strategic plan and meeting that goal. Over the past two years, the city manager's office has organized, along with Arapahoe County Emergency Management, a simulation where it brings most city departments to the police department, and we run a simulation as to what happens in a large-scale catastrophic disaster in Inglewood. We prepare for these, hoping we never have to use these skills that we're developing, the forms, the SOPs. But it did allow us to identify in the city attorney's office some gaps in the city's authority. Should there be this catastrophic emergency where we have to declare a disaster that would allow us to accept gifts, that would allow us to enter into contracts to respond to the emergency and to immediately help our citizens? In such a simulation, we had to imagine a circumstance when we couldn't reach five council members to enable us to have a meeting that would then enable us to sign a contract with Littleton to come clean up our community or to accept a gift of aid to our citizens through the city. So this proposal tonight presents to you amendments to municipal code that would allow us to act in such catastrophic emergencies. So the proposed amendments would add a new Inglewood Municipal Code Section 7-7-1 that would suspend our contract approval requirements in the case of a declared emergency only. In this case, the city manager would be able to sign a high-dollar contract that would otherwise require city council approval or that may otherwise require bidding of a contract. If we have to have a fast response in a catastrophic declared emergency, the city manager could then sign the contract immediately at no more than commercial prices. Now, this isn't to say that there wouldn't be any city council oversight because it does require the city manager to notify city council as soon as practicable and to then bring it to your next meeting to review and to authorize it. It also does include the authority to accept emergency-related gifts or donations to the city to provide aid to our citizens. One other thing is we added, it waives open meeting notice requirements. Otherwise, we're required to post notice as soon as practicable, generally at least 24 hours in advance. But in case of emergency, perhaps we just barely can gather five council members, and you need to meet immediately. We can't wait 24 hours. It allows us to do that. But it does require later ratification at a properly noticed meeting. So it wouldn't be the only time that city council considered these issues. We also had some of these provisions in subsection B of Municipal Code Section 7-7-3, and we moved it up to 7-7-1 so that all of these emergency powers are in one place. This section, which does currently exist in municipal code, says that city council can give the city manager other authority as well to respond to the emergency, but it's not automatic. City council would have to meet five of you to have a quorum to authorize the city manager to have additional authority. We also propose an amendment to our contracting provisions. This section lists when city council is required to authorize certain contracts. We just added a provision at the very bottom that said in case of emergency, these provisions are amended under 7-7-1. So we have that reference. If city council moves forward with this proposal, I know this is the first time you've heard it, so I'm, I am expecting some questions. But if you adopt it, we will incorporate it into the SOP that we are developing. You've heard it from me before. The city manager's office and Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd have developed a system to create standard operating procedures within the city. My office and many other departments have just wholly embraced it so that our successors can ensure consistency and can see what we've done and follow the same process. Though we have already drafted an SOP on emergencies that includes the city manager's authority for declaring emergency under state law, and we will supplement that with whatever you decide today as well. Okay, that was very fast, so I welcome your questions.
Thank you, City Attorney Niles. Member Russell?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. So did you look into the emergency history in Inglewood? How often has an emergency been declared?
In my files, I only have one, and it's regarding COVID-19.
Okay. And I will bring up something about that later because, and then who declares this emergency?
The city manager has authority to declare it. I believe city council can also declare an emergency, but what we are envisioning is the catastrophic emergency where we can't find enough council members to hold a meeting. And that's really what this is intended to apply to.
Okay, so in researching all of this, did you run into any specific incidents, instances where this would help us?
In Inglewood's history, I don't know of any specific circumstances, no.
Did you come up with any hypothetical circumstances?
We did the last two years. This last year, I believe it was a tornado dropping down. I think the year before that, it was maybe hazardous waste.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add a couple of things, if it took you, Member Russell. So the first is, so as of today, I've been with the city for five years. So in the past five-year period that I've been here, we've had two declared emergencies. COVID was the first one about five years ago. And then we also had a boil water order that was in August of 2021, so about four years ago. So those are the two declared ones. And yeah, so we have a contract with Arapahoe County for Emergency Management Services. And so we've had one for several years since 2019. We obviously changed it. Council amended it slightly last year. But we tried to do, as Harry Niles mentioned, two different tabletop exercises, which are real-life scenarios each year. Yes, this year, the two that we, well, excuse me, under the contract terms, we did two so far. So at the end of 2024, in December of 2024, we did one on a tornado touching down. And then on May 13th of this year, we did our second one for this contractual year to focus on a stormwater incident. We've had initial planning discussions with Arapahoe County for the next one, which will be in December likely of this year, November or December, which will be a continuation probably of the stormwater one. This is something we really haven't done a lot of, is we've really just done these one-offs, like two-hour simulation, but we want to kind of extend it. One of the things we want to get better at is kind of the demobilization of emergency management, and so that's what we want to focus on with the next one we hope to plan this fall.
Okay. Thank you. And then what if city council does not ratify this?
Well, this is the same conversation we have often about budget supplementals when the city has already spent the money. I think if the city... I think if, if the city manager had authority to sign the contract, did sign the contract, and then city council doesn't ratify it, essentially terminating the contract, we could have legal liability there for things like breach of contract or unjust enrichment.
Okay, and what if, what if city council can meet electronically if the city manager declares an emergency?
Yes, we specifically address that in our council policies. We have authority to meet when there is an emergency that doesn't allow us to meet in person. And so the mayor, I believe, can call that and then give everyone notice of the meeting and can handle it. What, that's what we always hope happens, is that city council can still meet, city council can authorize this. I know just because of the potential liability to the city if it's not ratified by city council or if, if the city manager takes an action that city council wouldn't have approved. So our, our preference is always that we can schedule that meeting. This is designed that if the disaster is so catastrophic that we can't, that city council just cannot meet. This ensures that the city can respond to that catastrophic disaster in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you. I have some comments, but I'll wait till the comment period. Thank you.
Member Ward.
Member Russell asked this question, but I'd actually like to know where we have the answer codified. You said that the city manager has the authority to declare disaster, but where does that authority derive from in this bill?
I believe that's under state law. That was actually a section that was evaluated and researched by the deputy city attorney. But I've looked at the draft SOP, and I believe that's under state law. And we have sided to it under the draft SOP. We don't include that in our municipal code.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think through scenarios, and I wouldn't foresee this happening. But if the manager perceives something to be a disaster that council didn't agree on, he would effectively be able to expand his authority to perform acts that council would otherwise have to authorize.
So, you know, it's, it's our job in the city attorney's office to plan for the worst and to come up with scenarios that are worst-case scenario, and we evaluated that very one. In that case, if it's not a true emergency, city council can meet, and you can immediately overturn it and, and take potentially employment action if you feel like the city manager acted beyond his authority.
All right, thank you.
Member Wright, did you have your light on? No? Okay. I know Member, Member Dinakam, okay, you were first, Member Dinakam.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And I apologize, I was reading your member Ward's question, so I hope this is not duplicative. If you go back to the flowchart slide, the third one says that we authorize the city manager to accept emergency-related gifts and donations, but the second one on contracts does not specify emergency-related, it just says contracts in general. Was that a key decision point?
It was not intended to be, no. Because, well, it wasn't intentional, but it wasn't a key point for us. It's because the only gifts that we would have to accept during an emergency are related to the emergency. Otherwise, we don't have to accept anybody's gift. But if we don't have any water and someone wants to donate two truckloads of water, we want to be able to accept that gift related to the emergency, because that's what our citizens need. Other contracts, however, it was intentional to not include, not limit it to emergency-related contracts, because we do still have to operate the city, not just related to the emergency. So, for example, I mean, we still have staff, and we still have police operations that maybe aren't related to the emergency. If a contract does need to be signed and we can't reach five city council members to be able to authorize it, we do still have to run the city during the emergency as well.
I was wondering if that would be your rationale. And while I think that makes sense, and I think we probably can get there, I'm just processing in real time since we're seeing this right now, is the, if we can't have a city council meeting and we need to use something that's emergency-related, it totally makes sense to me. But I just wonder, like, how many, how, for how long do we think we can not have a city council meeting that we would have to do, like, regular business? I think is what I'm trying to understand in the hypothetical.
I'm sorry, how long, what?
We wouldn't be able to have a city council meeting so that we would have to just start executing regular business outside of the emergency. I'm just trying to get a sense of what timeline we're hypothetically imagining.
As short as possible, but as long as necessary. I mean, I think, I, I mean, I lived in Kansas when a tornado took out an entire city, including the courthouse. And so I saw, thankfully not firsthand, it wasn't the city I lived in. But as city attorneys in Kansas, we all saw all of these issues, because there was no city council, there was no city council room, there was no, but the city had to start rebuilding. And so, I mean, hopefully, we never have an emergency where we ever have to use this. And if there is such an emergency, hopefully it's very short, and we're able to recover and city council get back on track in a very short time period. That's our goal. So I, I guess I can't, in a catastrophic, if, if we burn down, I mean, it could take some time.
And then just to clarify, if this building does burn down, are we not authorized to meet in another location?
No, you are, yes. When I say catastrophic, I mean, perhaps we don't have a sufficient number of
I gotcha.
Very catastrophic. We think in, sometimes it gets a little gruesome in the city attorney's office.
Yes, I understand. Thank you, I appreciate the additional detail.
Member Wright.
Thank you so much. If the city manager has the authority to take us into disaster, is he the one that takes us out?
Potentially. I think ideally it would be city council leading the charge out of the disaster, because, I mean, you are the leaders of this community, and you're the ones, it's, it's your responsibility to do it. This just gets us through that time period where you can't. But, I mean, the city manager is, is of course your employee and has the authority that you give him.
Okay. You said that you were going by state law, and I was making notes, and I didn't finish what it was on state law.
For declaration of disaster.
So wouldn't that follow more for municipalities that do not have a charter or a home rule? And those with a home rule can decide upon themselves how they write it themselves? So I'm just tripping all over here.
Generally, yes, we would have authority to change otherwise applicable state law unless there's been a preemption by state law, in which case we can't change it. So we are a home rule municipality, statutory municipalities can only follow state law, and, and we have more discretion. What we did internally was survey other home rule cities to see what they did. We call it, we don't reinvent the wheel when we're looking at legislation, because of other cities have had, have these provisions for some time. We look at what are the ones that work best. And other cities have, some have very, very long emergency management provisions. I believe it was Boulder or Fort Collins that was pages and pages and pages. Every scenario you could possibly imagine had been addressed. We tried to keep it fairly short and limit the authority that was granted to only things that we thought we would have to have to, to protect the city in case of a catastrophic emergency. And because of that, we did look at state law. State law is already very thorough, and we don't need to duplicate it. And, and it provided sufficient basis to declare that emergency.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Member Prank.
Thank you, thank you, City Attorney Niles. I actually really appreciate the intent of this change to remove barriers to protect our city and our residents. So I just want to celebrate that, that I think that there's great intention here, and anything that we can do to act quickly to make sure that we're protecting people is good in my vision. I guess to a question that was asked earlier on the potential of council disagreeing with city manager on what an emergency is, are there guidelines or definitions within emergency plans or the state or the city or Arapahoe County that kind of defines what an emergency would be or gives examples of such?
Well, City Manager Lewis has actually declared an emergency here, and it was before I started. I don't know if you want to weigh in on, on your process or experience of when, when the city manager's office decided to declare that emergency under COVID nineteen. Let me give us some background.
Thank you, City Attorney Niles, thanks for the question. Deputy City Manager Dodd is our keeper of the contract on emergency management.
Yeah, there is a federal law that regulates essentially when federal emergencies are required. And so kind of the guidance has been that we generally follow that. But it, generally, emergencies that require a full-scale, an additional, full-scale response and additional resources, there, there really isn't like a specific definition of like, you know, under this particular time. But it's, but usually the test, so to speak, is an emergency that cannot be mitigated based on the resources structured the way they are. So we use the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center model, that was created by FEMA. And essentially, under that model, employees are basically drafted to be a part of it. They, they're in different sections. And so it allows us to coordinate things like the logistics and the operations and things like that. As I mentioned, in five years, we've declared two of them. The county, I think they do about twenty or so every year. So they do declare emergencies related to snow removal. They obviously have a much larger land area than ours. We do have an emergency operations plan. By design, it's not specific to different types of emergencies, although it does contemplate types of emergencies that could be common in our area, such as things like wildfires, tornadoes, stormwater incidents and things like that. But yeah, it's generally, the test is emergencies that cannot be responded to with a structure of the way the city is operating that requires enhanced focus and additional staff, or staff resources that are dedicated to it.
Okay, that's very helpful. I think that alleviates concerns that I would have on any discrepancy that there would exist between councils' perception of something. Is, you know, it sounds like there is a standard in place that could be resourced to or a disagreement ever to occur, so I really appreciate the answer. Thank you.
And I will add, the ordinance states that it has to be, has to affect public property, health, peace, or safety as well.
I want to ask a totally hypothetical question. Could this be invoked if three council members were recalled and there could be no quorum acquired?
Well, if somebody asks me that when I'm not sitting at the podium, I would say, let me research it, and I will get back to you. Ultimately, I would have to research it and get back to you. We did discuss, when we had some recalls, three recalls a few years ago, we had discussed potential options, and at that point, we determined our best option was to, to go get a court order, appointing, likely appointing some temporary council members so that we could conduct business. At that time, when we were evaluating different options, declaring an emergency was not, was not on the table. But, but I would want to research it if it actually happened and, and give the remaining council members a list of options as to how we could proceed.
Very good. All right, can I get a motion to approve eleven A two CB forty-two?
Move to approve eleven A two.
Thank you, Member Prank. Can I get a second? Oh, okay. All right, we have a second. All right, discussion. Member Russell.
I've actually been on council long enough to have gone through a couple of emergencies, and COVID was one of them. And the attorney at the time was not the current attorney. And there was a boilerplate declaration of emergency and the powers that were given. And for some reason, a few council members could not be there that night. And then we called an emergency meeting the next night. And in the meantime, people in the city had an opportunity to look at the thing. And there was such a huge outrage about the contract in that it gave the city manager the authority to confiscate private property. And the citizens had outraged that so much that that got removed from the contract. There was another time before that, and this was related to stormwater. I believe it was before you were here, Sean, just, probably just before, because I think Dorothy Hargrove was interim city manager. And there were sinkholes over on Oxford, and big sections of storm pipe needed to be replaced. And we were able to get five council members. I think we had two emergency meetings, two nights in a row. I think one of them was on a Wednesday, and one of them was on a Thursday. And it wasn't six council members, or, I mean, there were five council members, and they were different council members both nights. I, I struggle with giving this authority, because we have been entrusted with the direction of this city and the safety of the city, and we're the ones that should be making those decisions. And I mean, in a scenario, what happens if something happens to the city manager and the city manager isn't there to make a decision?
We actually discussed that internally as well, as to, do we want to specifically include that line of succession? In general, it would then go to the deputy city manager, and then it, it would go to the public works director. And so we, we debated whether or not to specifically include that line of succession. But we also wanted to keep it short, because we know, you know, our council generally does, is fairly restrictive in, in giving powers out to city staff, because it's your job. And so we, we decided not to include it. And then when we were talking about, okay, when we reach the, the chief of police, then who? Then we decided at that point, the city probably has bigger problems than deciding who's going to sign a contract. So that's why we decided not to include it. But it would be the city manager, then the deputy city manager, and then go down from there.
Because I see if there's a huge emergency, it's going to be more than just contracts, the decisions that are being made. And I have trouble leaving that in the hand of one person that really has not been entrusted with that authority.
Thank you, Member Russell. Other comments? Member Ward.
I share some of Member Russell's concern, and I, I definitely can identify with where it's coming from. I think in this case, in the event that council was still available and active, it would be the mayor's duty to call an emergency meeting of council if we disagreed with the decisions that were being made by the manager. But the purpose of this is to allow the person that we have empowered with the administration of the city on a day-to-day basis to act swiftly in the event that an emergency occurs that requires swift action. In, in, in the case that we're not dealing with an emergency that requires swift action, there would be no need for him to invoke emergency powers. But we've seen in the past, even, it takes some time to assemble the council, to get even a quorum to show up at a specific time. We have to notice the meeting, and then everybody has to agree to be there to conduct the business, whereas the manager is on duty twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, ready to respond if his phone rings. So I think this is an appropriate delegation of authority in this case, and I will be voting yes.
Can, can I respond?
Yeah.
To that? The, the mayor themselves have the authority to call an emergency meeting even without this happening. And there hasn't been an emergency. I mean, I, I think there have been times when it's been difficult, when maybe more than one council member is out of town or something. But I, I don't think that's been a problem. And we're talking about hypothetical situations. So that's just my response to you, Member Ward. Thank you.
I'm close on this. The, the challenge I have is the, the purpose for this, as the city attorney stated it, was so that if, if council could not be reached. But it doesn't, I can't tell that it actually says that part, where, you know, it's unable to get a quorum or council cannot be reached because the disaster has affected, you know, affected them or something like that. That's the one thing I would like to see in here. I would like, I, I mean, if, I guess, I, I would like to see some, if, if we could, if we had the support to, you know, expand this a little so that if only four council members can be reached. so that if only four council members can be reached, then those four can function as a quorum in, in an emergency or something like that. So we have a, a way that we can move, move forward with as much council engagement as possible, but also allowing the city manager to actually have that authority during, during a disaster.
We can't change the quorum requirement. It's in charter. However, we could easily add in here that this only applies when council can't have a quorum. I, I think that's, I mean, that's definitely something we could add. No problem with that at all.
I'm trying to, I'm thinking back to COVID. And I was, Nathaniel was there and Councilmember Russell, otherwise, I think this is all new council members. But it was, and you know, looking back on it now, maybe perhaps overhyped in its severity. And we, you know, we responded, it took a couple of days to get a quorum together. And, but we were able, you know, we were able to do it. I think if that came up again, I would be concerned that this would be used to, you know, oh, council's not, you know, they're, they're not coming out for the meeting. You know, that, it took a little work to get it going, but it was good work. And it provided, I think it provided accountability in a time that was politically contentious and accountability was really important for the sake of the citizens. So to have something in there that ensured that this isn't used unless like, you know, if, if some disaster really does, you know, kill several members of council, like I want the city manager to be able to act. But if council's just slow to respond because they don't think it's as big a deal as the city manager or something like that, and the city manager says, all right, I can't get a quorum together, we're gonna, we're gonna declare, you know, declare an emergency and I'm gonna sign these contracts. I think that could potentially be damaging the public trust if it's not such a clear, you know, such a clear disaster. That's the thing I want to mitigate against is a situation where the disaster is interpreted by one, you know, you know, one political party as super severe and the other side as maybe this isn't as big a deal as everybody's making it out to be. And, and so we get, get this contentious thing going on in the community and, and destroy trust by just declaring an emergency and the city manager starts acting. I don't know what the best way to amend this, to accomplish that, but that's where I would need to be to support this. Other comments from council? Uh, Member Noon Camp.
I would support the amendment that Mayor Potem is referencing. And I'm wondering if that can fit into Section E, where it's talking about how we can't notice the meeting. If we aren't able to notice it, we can still have the meeting. I also wonder if it's, if we aren't able to secure quorum for the meeting, these, this delegation of powers would automatically go into effect or something after that section. So to phrase that in a question, can you tell us what that amendment would look like, City Attorney?
Well, when Mayor Potem Anderson was first discussing it, I envisioned just something at the very beginning of 7-7-1 that states, "These provisions shall apply if city council is unable to obtain a quorum to meet."
My only concern with that is in, in 771E, it also stipulates that if we aren't able to provide public notice of a city council meeting, the meeting can be conveyed without usual notice. So there are sections that say we might meet. So I don't want to say at the very top, it presupposes we won't meet. That's why I'm wondering if it goes somewhere else about quorum specifically.
Or could the content of E be incorporated into kind of a preliminary statement? I don't know.
Yeah, or we add an F that has something to do with if quorum can't be achieved, you know, due to, you know, extenuating circumstances or serious circumstances.
I'm wondering if this isn't complicated enough, if we shouldn't table this and wait till we have a full council? And in the meantime, try to do some revisions to see if we can get that provision, something like that provision in there, but not trying to make it up here on the spot. I'm afraid we're not going to do our best work right now.
No.
Yeah, Member Ray. Oh, yeah.
On something with this also, would if we put something that we try to get a quorum for council within a certain time period? And if we don't do it within that time period, then it goes to the city manager?
That, that would be, that, I would like to see that. I like that. Okay, Member Prang.
Yeah, I, I think I would support tabling it to have a more full conversation with full council present. I just want us to be cautioned a little bit that I think the intent of this is in extreme circumstances. And so I would want, if there is a, a time limit added, for it to be a very brief time limit. Because if it is catastrophic, we don't need to be wasting time trying to call council members to get a quorum together. The city manager needs to declare that emergency and take action. And so I just request that we be sensible in what the amendment looks like.
Appreciate that. All right, Member Ward.
I'd like to send this to a study session, frankly. There's quite a few unanswered questions or things that we can do to make it something that we're more comfortable with. I don't want to disparage the work that the city attorney's office has done on this. I just think that there's six heads on the dais right now. Each of them have a somewhat different idea of what authority we should be granting to the manager under what circumstances. And that would be something that we would normally discuss in a study session.
I agree with that. All right, can, can I ask if, I don't remember who made the motion, if somebody, whoever made the motion would withdraw it, and then we'll have a motion to table to date uncertain.
I would throw out the motion.
Thank you. I get a motion to table this to date uncertain with the provision that me and the mayor will work on getting this on a study session before we bring it back to council.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Rita, did you?
Are we moving too fast here? Because you gotta write this. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, there we go.
We have a second by council member, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Let the record show six eyes.
Thank you, City Attorney Niles. Appreciate you bringing this, and I would just agree with Member Prang that this is important work. And I think it's worth spending a little more, more time on, but I appreciate the preliminary work that's gone into it. All right, moving on to agenda item 11B1, CB37 Global Storage PUD back for a third reading. And we have Community Development Manager Brad, oh, we got Eric Sampson here to present on this. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did watch, watch this and understand the revision that was made. So I'm good to go on this, but go ahead and say anything you need to.
Right. Good evening, council. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve CB37?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Member Ray. And as soon as it updates, we'll get a second. Okay, second. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Let, let the record show five eyes and one nay, the way, one nay being council member Noon Camp.
All right. Thank you, Manager Sampson.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. And thank you for the, coming back a third time while we finally got this done. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to agenda item 11C. We have resolutions and motions, a motion for the acceptance of strategic plan updates for Q2 2025. City manager, or Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd.
Thank you. And I'll be doing this presentation jointly with our intern, Chris Lee, who you met earlier today. Chris has done a great job. He's actually done a lot of work on emergency management in our office and wanted a chance to present before all of you. So he's going to be doing the bulk of this. So I'll do a quick introduction and then I'll close it out. But we'll be turning it over to Chris. So as a really quick introduction, this is something we obviously do every quarter. We've been doing it for five years, as you probably all know. Next year, we'll be doing a brand-new strategic plan. So we've already kind of started thinking about what that process would look like involving the community and involving members of council. One thing I want to point out here, though, is when we go through this, you're going to see more delayed projects than what you're used to. And so I want to kind of explain the case of why that is. So years ago, five years ago, we started the strategic planning process. We didn't define completion dates for projects. We actually just started doing that in the last year or so. And so really, most of the project updates we would bring to you would say in progress because they were in progress for the whole year. But this year, we started doing them, each one, or last year actually, has a deliverable date that's tied to a quarter. So the first quarter only had, I think, five or six projects that were tied to completion of that product, that quarter. We have several more now. So even if things are showing as delayed, that means that they were delayed being completed by the end of this quarter. But we're hopeful we'll be able to complete them by the end of the year. So we would love your feedback if there's projects in there that you'd like us to prioritize as we work to complete them. So I will turn it over now to Chris, who's going to give an overview of the projects that are in the plan. And yeah, Chris.
Thank you very much, Tim, and good eve, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us today for the Quarter Two 2025 Strategic Plan Update. As a reminder, in our strategic plan, we have outlined eight outcome areas, 57 goals, 149 key projects, 110 metrics, three projects currently in development, and eight plugin plans. For Quarter Two, there were 33 projects that were expected to be completed. Out of those, 13 were completed, 14 were delayed, 11 of those in progress, two are on hold, and three projects that were expected for completion in Quarter Three were accomplished ahead of schedule. The Affordable Housing Outreach Campaign is delayed pending council direction. Bridge House opened in May and was successfully completed. The Adopt a Spot program was launched, and that project is completed. The Banner Program for South of Hampton on Broadway is delayed and in progress, aligning with South Broadway Revitalization Project. The Special Event Permitting System is fully implemented and live. The update to the business license application to include the number of employees is on hold as staff reevaluates the best way to obtain this information. The strategy to address safety perceptions in the commercial corridor is delayed but in progress as part of the Continuous South Broadway Revitalization Project. In Governance, the development of a glossary of common language and terms is delayed. The creation of an internal staff committee to integrate mission, vision, and values statements in the work of the city is delayed. The exploration of ranked choice voting, if directed by council, is completed. The update to the election manual and related processes is delayed with the expected delivery in Quarter Three. The update to the city, sorry, to the council member onboarding and offboarding process is delayed with expected delivery in Quarter Three. The development of standard operating procedures for internal events is completed. The implementation of a digital voting system for council meetings is completed. The work to develop a standard operating procedure guidebook is delayed. The creation of a process to conduct state interviews is delayed with expected delivery in Quarter Four. The improvement of at least one break area in city facilities is delayed and in progress. The creation of a survey to obtain input on employee opinions of and interest in co-working spaces is delayed. The creation of at least three unique courses for employees and the publication of a training catalog with course offerings is delayed with expected delivery in Quarter Three. The revision of the new employee orientation program is completed. The automated, automation of workflow for open requisitions and refinement of jobs descriptions is delayed with expected delivery in Quarter Three. The establishment of a document governance policy is delayed with progress in developing document naming convictions and storage directory structure. The creation of a governance structure around form use and management is on hold due to staffing. The design of a system as a primary tool for attracting the GIS strategic plan is completed. Under Infrastructure, the full implementation of new utility billing software is completed. The development of a five-year plan for facilities and maintenance assessment management is delayed and in progress. The review and improvement of contract processes for infrastructure-related contracts is delayed and in progress. For Safety, the posting of weekly crime stat updates on social media is completed, transitioning to monthly posts that began in Quarter One and will be ongoing through 2025. In Sustainability, the, the completion of resiliency workshops in the resiliency framework is delayed with expected delivery in Quarter Four. The work with Colorado Efficiency Energy Office, excuse me, to conduct an energy performance audit on major city facilities is completed. The improvement of the business interface to include testimonials and make it more user-friendly is completed and will be ongoing throughout 2025. The development of resources for businesses with less than 10 people on achieving specific sustainability-related goals is completed and will be ongoing throughout 2025. In Transportation, the completion of walkability maps for three schools is delayed and in progress. The development of a proposal for a parking plan for council consideration is delayed. Under Community Engagement, the creation of an analytics structure to monitor website performance is completed, originally expected for delivery in Quarter Three. Under Governance, the obtaining of America's, Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, Coordinator Certification is completed, originally expected for delivery in Quarter Three. And in Safety, the development of mapping tools and templates for emergency activations is completed, originally expected for delivery in Quarter Three.
Thanks, Harrison. Yeah, just to emphasize, the terminology is a bit different, but most of the projects that we're saying are delayed really are in progress. And we do hope, as Chris articulated, most of them will be completed in this current quarter that we're in. So really quickly, I just want to go over how we're engaging the community. We did get feedback from several of you about wanting to do more community engagement around the strategic plan. So the first is about a, two years ago, a year and a half ago, excuse me, we launched on this dashboard. The last time we presented to you, we, we noticed there was a glitch in it, but it should be fully operational now. But it's a great way of tracking progress towards performance metrics. Almost all of them, and this is also feedback we got from council two retreats ago, I believe, was to have more targets. So we started baselining these metrics a couple of years ago to just collect data and see where we're at. But we went through a very comprehensive process last year and set targets towards most of those. So if you're looking at it on your computer and you see on those green boxes that say on target or off target, it's comparing the data towards a target that's been set based on baselining. We also, thanks to our data and analytics team, do have this pretty comprehensive project tracking tool that's also on the strategic plan website. Both of these tools that I'm mentioning are linked there. And this shows our progress each quarter on different projects and shows ones that are completed with color coding. And then finally, we did get feedback from some of you again about community engagement. So we did create a Inglewood Engage page as a way of providing an opportunity for community members to share questions and also to provide quarterly, these quarterly updates that we give to council. As I mentioned, we are for the next cycle, when we hope to recreate, redo the strategic plan for the next few years, whatever the timeline is that council sets, we will be doing a comprehensive with, of course, council direction, community engagement period to get feedback from the community as council works to set goals for the next strategic plan. So that's the presentation, and we're happy to take questions.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Dodd, and thank you, Chris, for the presentation. Great job. Good job on your internship as well. And I'll open up to council for any questions. Councilmember Noon Camp.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I've got a couple of questions. One, this is for Q2. We're obviously, uh, right at the end here. Is this typically when we will see this, like within kind of, like this is pretty quickly after Q2 just ended? Is this typically when we will see this, like within kind of, like this is pretty quickly after Q2 just ended?
That's all things to Liz. But yes, the idea is where, and she's actually setting up a whole protocol for us to be able to do this in the future. But yes, we're trying to do it as, within a month or so is the goal.
That's great. And I really appreciate it being on Inglewood Engage. I think that's going to help. I think I also have asked in the past, you know, how else are we sharing this information with the community? Are we putting it on social media? Are we putting it in the magazine? Do we have plans to do that as well? I can't, I couldn't recall if we did it in Q1.
Yeah, thank you for the reminder, Member Noonan Camp. We haven't done extensively. It is something that we could do more of. I think I may have mentioned in our internal newsletter called The Junction, we do have a column called Ready to Succeed. And so the thought was that we could use some of the vignettes from that to push out through social media. So thank you for the reminder. We can definitely do that.
Yeah, I think the vignettes and the anecdotal things are really helpful. And also, I think many of our citizens do not know we have a strategic plan. And for them to understand that we're actually operating against a plan and for transparency and accountability so they also know, okay, there's a dashboard here. And I think we put out a lot of information. And if they don't know where to go and find it or don't know it exists, then they won't have that information. And so I do think in the same way that I appreciate getting a quarterly update. I think our citizens, even if it's going out in, you know, the city newsletter, some of those things, I think it is a good use of time and space. So would encourage us to continue to explore that.
Member Wright.
Thank you so much. I just have a couple of questions that are pretty quick. Please. Under safety, the safety communications, it says transition to monthly posts that began in first quarter. Now, I was reading at the beginning, it was weekly post in the safety. I believe they were crime posts that were weekly, and then they moved to monthly.
Yeah, if that's the police chief to come up to address that.
Dave Jackson, Chief of Police, and thank you so much. This is something that we've undertaken. What we'd really like to do is have a real-time crime dashboard, which is what we're working to. We're hoping to be able to do this weekly in the meantime. Right now, it's monthly. They, we have been putting that on our social media. It's a good reminder. We need to stay on top of that. And frankly, we have been posting that. I would like to increase that, but also get to a point where it's just a real-time dashboard that people can look at any time. But hopefully to do it weekly. Right now, we're monthly.
Oh, that's great. Now, and we're, you started weekly, didn't you? And then you went monthly?
We tried to do weekly. We're just not able to get it done. So give ourselves some leeway to monthly and try to get that going a lot quicker. And thank you for the reminder. That's something actually that I should follow up on.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, because the beginning of the packet said you were weekly, then went monthly.
Totally fair. Thank you.
I'm like, oh, yeah, I'd be great if you. That's what safety people want. Okay, thank you.
Any other, oh, you got more?
Yeah, I do. And then my other question is, with the updating the elections and that process, do you know if they are working with the Elections Commission on that?
Yeah, let the city clerk address that question.
Can you repeat the question?
It was working with, it says, update an election manual and related processes. Are you working with the Elections Commission with that?
We're creating a draft that will then be studied and brought to the Election Commission for recommendations.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right. Seen none? Can I get a motion to approve the motion, 11C1, to accept the strategic plan updates? Somebody claiming it.
I'm trying to approve. It doesn't like me.
Okay, motion from Member Wright. I think unless, we're fighting with it here.
There we go.
All right, we got a motion.
Mayor Protem, hold on just a second.
Okay, hang on.
There we go.
Member Wright, ready for a second? All right, very good. We have a motion, a second. Any comments? Seen none, please vote.
Let the record show, six ayes.
All right. Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Thanks, Chris Lee. And we'll now move on to general discussion. Under Mayor's Choice, we have a approval of a renewal letter. I don't, unless we have objections, I don't think we need to vote on this. We just need, need consent from council. This is, the IGA with Arapahoe County for Emergency Management has a renewal every year. And we've already passed the IGA, so it's just renewing it for another year. So all we have to do is consent to sending a letter to renew that. Questions? Member Russell.
Yes. A year ago, didn't we change something in our relationship with them?
Yeah, thank you, Member Russell. So we changed several things. So this is actually the first year of the renewal under that new agreement. So the main thing is that we're paying a lot less. We're paying about sixty thousand compared to almost one hundred and twenty thousand. And that was really a recognition of a shift in the model from a direct service model to a technical assistance model. So the, as I think we, we talked about last year when I was here talking about it, there was a lot of confusion around, you know, what, what one FTE meant, what the services that were, they were providing to us meant. And so the new IGA clearly stipulates their responsibilities and our responsibilities. For example, of having a monthly meeting, that the plans that they need to help us with, the number of tabletops. And I personally think that since we had this new agreement, the expectations have been a lot clearer, and we've gotten a great service from them. We've learned a lot from them. We generally feel like things are going in the right direction. I think in the draft of the letter, I put a few bullet points of things that I believe we've accomplished together over the course of the last year.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, I was a little bit concerned that maybe we were backing off a year ago. But I just wanted to make sure that we're continuing to have emergency management taken care of, so.
Yeah, and if it's okay if I just say, I completely understand that. That line of thought we were trying to do, though, is an acknowledgement of what, how far the city has come in terms of its ability to do this. And so the shift really was about an acknowledgement that the city can, can do a lot more than they could, you know, a couple of years ago, but that we still need assistance from the county. So we really think it's worked well. You know, they've helped us kind of provide, I would say, even stronger direction than we were getting before, just in a more streamlined approach.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Member Pring.
Thank you. I just have a really picky request. In the letter, it, it references an email that was received, and it gives a date, but we don't have the year associated with that. Can we just add the year?
Of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody object to sending the letter? Seen none, we consent. Very good. All right, to Councilmember's Choice. Well, I'll begin since I'm already talking. The only thing I have tonight is I wanted to announce a town hall I'm going to hold. It's Sunita's Brewing on August 28th at 6:00 PM. And specifically to talk about walkability, infrastructure, as well as traffic calming. And we're looking for idea, I want to be looking for ideas for small wins, small win projects. What can we do as we move into this next, next year with money set aside for traffic calming in the, in the budget? What can we do? What do the citizens actually want to see? So we'll be inviting citizens out for that. I know I've been in touch with Vibrant Inglewood. That, that group is really interested in this, so they're going to be a part of that as well and would invite all the citizens who have an interest in walkability, bikeability, and traffic calming out to that. And that's all for my Councilmember's Choice. Anyone else? Member Pring.
Thank you. I just wanted to give Mayor Protem some kudos for the handling of our disruptions in the meeting tonight and also to give kudos to those that were in the audience that maybe participated. I think it's one of the things that I love best about Inglewood is that sometimes we get really impassioned, and that's a beautiful thing. And we also oftentimes take a moment to stop and hear one another out. And I heard some apologies flowing across the dais and, and from the public tonight. And I just think that that was a really good example of how we should function in the city.
Thank you, Member Pring. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Member Wright.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I received a call today from a citizen. She received her Inglewood magazine, and in it is the little, what do they call it? The little scan, you could use your phone, thank you, QR code for the South Broadway Revitalization. And she had a couple of issues. Number one, she doesn't have a smartphone, so she can't use the QR code. And then she went to the website because she wanted to take the survey, and she had an issue because in order to get in, you have to put your email address. So her concern is, in order to take the survey through the website, she can't be anonymous. And she wants to give information. And she said, in this city, you can't take a survey if you don't have a smartphone, and you can't be anonymous because you're gonna, the city's gonna have your email address. And when I was at Malle Trust today, they're going to be putting out a survey soon. And we had a big discussion about that because there's, you know, Malle Trust is fifty-five and over, and will, they run into the same situation. So I think that possibly there could be a discussion on making sure surveys are anonymous and other ways, especially with the South Broadway Revitalization. We could get word out on how to have anonymous surveys. It's important to a lot of people. My other item is, council has received very short notice on multiple events coming up tomorrow. We have Neighborhood Nights. We received a, what is the other one? South Broadway. And then there is something at Pirate's Cove tomorrow, which is the, showing the plan of, the, yeah, the renew and recreate. So we have three things that we received short notice on, and I'm not sure if I could be three places at once. So I don't know what could be done. And I'm sure there's other staff members that this may have happened to. I don't know if all council members could be at all places at once. And they're all important things to all of us. And it's really difficult to pick and choose where we could be. So I guess I would just ask that we're very careful with the communication and maybe give them some notice to us. I would appreciate that. That's all I have.
All right, anyone else? Don't see any. Moving on to Item 13, City Managers' Report. Manager Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a couple of follow-ups from tonight that we've already taken some action on. The Director of Community Development, the Chief of Police, and the Director of Public Works were able to meet immediately following the Jessup's comments tonight to discuss the vacant lot that we believe is owned by HCA, but it is a staging area. And so we will be working with them in responding to the council requests offered on that. The other update I wanted to give was, we did do a council request on the, the question that Mr. Kozak brought up about cracking foundations at the rental property that's behind Sam's Automotive. And I responded to that by reaching out to the owner of the property in Littleton, who didn't, and letting her know what was reported. Did not hear back from her and put that. But we will attempt to make contact with the renter. We just couldn't find contact information for that home. So we'll continue to follow up that. The other item that I've been working with the city clerk's office, some of them in the room tonight, on was the, the 2009 ordinance with regard to PABs, the Private Activity Bonds. We did, we were buying very aggressive, Ingle was, Inglewood was, during the 2008, 2009 housing crisis and buying up foreclosed properties. We were doing that through a federal program called the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And that was two different acts of Congress that funded that back in that period during that foreclosure crisis. But we cannot find any record of the PABs. So, Member Wright, if you can help me with the ordinance that you have. We did find, find a water bond ordinance as well as the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. But I just, you know, want the, the public to know that we, we really, really look for projects in Inglewood to fund with these PABs. But as was mentioned, you know, we have to have a, a user, an end user, someone building something in order to locate a user. We always start with the housing authority. And so we'll continue to, you know, work with our partners to try to find projects that can be building affordable housing or other projects that meet those qualifications. And then lastly, do apologize, particularly on the Neighborhood Night Out for tomorrow. I know you've all received an invitation either by call or email or both from the police department. But if you do want to ride along tomorrow, the, as always, it's, we are always late, last minute in getting the neighborhoods to commit to hosting a party. We've got, I believe, eleven. And so those are going to be happening throughout the community tomorrow night, including on my street at Doug Coen's house, where I'll be. And would love to have you all escorted by a member of our command staff and police or a sergeant to take you around to those. Certainly, you can go to those on your own. And I believe that list has gone out with those addresses and the timeframe in which they are doing. But, Member Wright, you are correct. That was late getting out. The, the, there was a reschedule because of weather with regard to the employee and council appreciation picnic, and that is going to be Wednesday. And so that doesn't conflict tomorrow night. But yes, we did have to reschedule that from, I believe, two weeks ago because it was raining the night of that. So that's the rescheduled date. In which there's also a Neighborhood Nights. So yes, unfortunate on that conflict there. But there is an hour that they do not overlap. So that's what I'm going to be doing, is going to Neighborhood Nights and then hitting up the employee appreciation picnic. But duly noted, as Krista pointed out today, Mercury is in retrograde, and communication issues seem to be popping up. So thank you for your comments and feedback tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? All right. Seen none, adjourn the meeting.